Good evening and welcome to the Town Council Meeting of Monday, April 10th, 2023 at 7:00 PM here in the McKinnon Council Chambers. Relative to Mass. General I Chapter 38, Section 20F, and for the benefit of the public, this meeting is being recorded by both video and audio methods. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, roll call.
Chair Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Monticni.
Present.
Counselor Rubus.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Steve.
Present.
We have nine present. We have a quorum. We have a meeting. Item number three, consider and accept the Town Council Meeting Minutes of Monday, March 27th, 2023. So moved. Motion by Counselor Lazo, second by Counselor Steves. Any deletions, additions? Anything on the minutes? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? abstained? Unanimous of all present? Subcommittee reports. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on March 29th. Items 15, surplus truck. Item 16, sewer transfer for new fleet truck. And item 17 tonight, water transfer for increased cost global data system. We have a meeting scheduled for the 18th. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Education and Human Services, Counselor Monticni.
Thank you very much. We have a meeting scheduled on the 12th, Wednesday, at 6:00. We're going to do most of the budgets, the school budgets especially. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. General Government, Counselor Steves.
We have not had a meeting since the last meeting. Our budget meeting starts on the 13th at 6:30, and we might, if necessary, go to the 26th as well. And that's all I have at the moment.
Very good. Thank you. Planning and Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, on April 3rd, we had our P&amp;D meeting. Agenda items number 10 through 14 are on tonight's agenda. Our next meeting will be on the 19th of April. And just update on the ARPA, we had a meeting on the 6th, and those motions will be on the April 24th Town Council meeting. Thank you.
Very good. And Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Lazo.
To and fro to Chair, I'd like to say we had a meeting at 6:00 tonight. We have agenda items on tonight for recommendations. Thank you.
Very good. Item number five, Chairman's announcements. I have no announcements this evening. Item number six, Town Manager's announcements. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two announcements. The year four MS4 Stormwater Report has been filed. It was filed on time on April 7th. And the contractor who has the contract for the 2022 road program has been given notice by the DPW Director to proceed with the remainder of the program. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Item number seven, presentations. First presentation this evening is a proclamation being given by Vice Chair Adams.
Proclamation, whereas Christo Peter Athanas of Albanian descent was born on December 25th, 1914, on Lenz and Moore Street in Southbridge, Massachusetts. Whereas Mr. Athanas was educated at Mechanic Street Elementary School and Mary E. Wells Junior High School. Whereas Mr. Athanas played semi-pro football as the youngest, which he was 15 years old at the time, and the smallest player ever to play for Southbridge's Hamilton-Woolen Mills semi-pro football team. Whereas he married his wife, Mary C. Brew from Quinnabog, Connecticut. They have three children, four grandchildren, and several great-grandchildren. Whereas he owned Athanas Incorporated Jewelry, Athbro Precision Engineering Corporation, and Tobert Industries Incorporated, all within Southbridge. Whereas he was a member of the Cohasi Country Club, Southbridge Lions Club, Knights of Columbus, and St. John Paul II Parish. Whereas the Southbridge Council wishes to extend its sincere congratulations and gratitude. Now therefore, the Town Council of Southbridge does hereby honor Christo Peter Athanas for his commitment to the town of Southbridge and perseverance emblematic of our community. Given this 10th day of April 2023, signed David S. Adams, Vice Chair. I want to present this to his daughter, Pat, also his son, Bob, and his wife. If they are here, I'm not sure if they are here at all. I just want to mention that Mr. Athanas is 108 years old.
Marquetti on the curbside committee updates.
Hello, counselors. And welcome, everybody, to tonight's meeting. Is it on? All right. Thank you. So as soon as I can figure out how to get this thing going, may have to have cable come in here and show me. Okay. Hopefully you can all hear me. Tonight, we're going to talk about the Southbridge curbside recommendation as presented by the Ad Hoc Curbside Committee with assistance from Irene Congdon of Mass. DEP Municipal Assistant Coordinator. Tonight, tonight's meeting, April 10th, 2023. As everyone knows, our curbside is going to be, our free curbside trash collection will be ending next year, March 25th, 2024. Residents will have to start paying for their own trash. The Town Council voted to maintain a townwide contracted trash removal in Southbridge the same as we have now. The only question now is how are we going to pay for it? So to that end, the Council Daniel Chair created a curbside, a trash committee to take a look at our options. The members of the committee, as you can see up on the screen, myself, Counselor Marquetti, Counselor Steves, Health Inspector Daniel Wasuik, Border Health Member Daniel Grabowski, citizen members Kevin Buxton, Steve Gregoire, Mark Latoy, and Kathy Grenier. We had assistance from Anna Smith, Recycling Coordinator, Irene Congdon, Mass. DEP, Rachel Carney, the Assessor, and Francine Farland, Principal Clerk. Question is, and I wanted to thank Irene Congdon for helping me with this PowerPoint. She did a very good job, very informative. The question now is, why are we doing this now? Well, our contract will be ending in March 25th, 2024. We are entitled to a technical assistant grant, and we are looking at sustainability goals because eventually we want to keep materials for as long as we can, minimize the amount of solid waste that is disposed in our landfill. As you can see by the chart here, the pie chart, these are some of the material that goes into the Wheelabrator facility in Millbury. Basic recyclables, 12% that goes in for incineration, ends up, ends up in the, to be burned. Compostable, 32%, like food, food organic material. Charm items, I believe that's material that's hard to manage, like electronics and oil waste, things like that. Textiles, wood, and 38% that goes into the incinerator items that we will never, likely never get rid of. Next slide, the goals. Our goal is to make it a budget-friendly system, trash and recycle program, and reduce trash, promote access to all, recycling, hazardous waste, yard waste, organics, waste ban items, and reuse programs. Trash and recycling will be picked up curbside. We have received an RFP for curbside. The town will have a contract with one hauler to pick up trash and recyclables from the municipality, from the municipal buildings and the residents' one to six family units. We're looking at the enterprise fund as a way to keep curbside program revenue and the expenses in one account to see where the money goes. All departments that spend time on material management can get reimbursed from the fund. The committee recommends we utilize the enterprise fund for this curbside program. We've included a Massachusetts waste ban law that lists the things that cannot go in your trash, such as paper, cardboard, paperboard products, glass, metal, plastic bottles, leaves and yard waste, batteries, white goods, whole tires, televisions, concrete, wood mattresses, and organics, 1,000 pounds per week. So here are some of the funding options that we have been looking at. We've been meeting since last November to take a look at the three basic options: property taxes, a flat fee, or a user fee. A pay-as-you-throw bags, specific colors with town name and seal. We could try a combination of all three options. For example, tax would cover the staff, a flat fee would cover the collection, residents would pay for trash bags. We could have a tax with a flat fee, a tax with a bag, or a flat fee with bags. I also brought some samples of the bags so everybody could take a look at them. It would be a specific color and size. This is one of the larger bags. As you can see, this is quite a large bag. This would, this would probably handle a lot of trash for residents. My wife and I could probably use one of these once every two weeks, probably. Then we have the smaller ones. These are, that was like a 33 gallon, I believe. This one would be like a 15 gallon. A lot cheaper. This would be like a dollar. The large one would be $2.
I need like seven of these.
Some families that, that buy, have to put, purchase more bags, they would pay more. And that's why it's called a user fee. The more you purchase, the more you would pay for garbage, for the bags. And I have plenty of samples here if any of the residents would like so. Please help, please help yourself. So moving on. We did a town survey, as many of you recall seeing the survey that came in the mail. Question one, we got, most of our results, these are the results that we got as of April 6th. Direct mail was the number one way that people get their information, social media, town website, those were the top three. Most of the residents who responded were homeowners. Renters were second, and landlords, not, not that many landlords responded. Which option do you prefer? The user fee, pay-as-you-throw, was the number one choice at 699 respondents. Property taxes and flat fee were close, second and third. From the 1,600, we received about 1,600. I thought it was a pretty good representation of the residents of Southbridge. What is a unit-based trash bag? Pay-as-you-throw, it's solid waste program where residents pay a unit, a per-unit fee for disposal of household trash. Residents are not charged a direct fee for recycling. This creates a financial incentive to reduce, reuse, and recycle more and waste less. Funding options, pros and cons. With a flat fee, the pro for that is it's a billing process that can be easily done with utility software, no taxes. The con for a flat fee would residents have no incentive to reduce trash. Residents can opt out and dealing with billing. Property tax, everyone is in the program, one bill to pay the hauler. The con on a property taxes, it causes the budget to go up very high, and residents have no incentive to reduce. Now, some of the funding options that we looked at, property taxes with bags, cost can be spread out over the tax base. Users pay for what they use, one bill to the hauler. Bag vendor takes care of the inventory, retailer, and subtracting the cost of the bag and putting money into town account. The bags would reduce trash. Property tax with bags, the con for that is it is on the tax base. The perception, residents have a perception of purchasing bags. Currently, residents buy black and white bags. They would have to switch to a colored bag purchased through with the town seal. The flat fee with bags, utility software is great with a flat fee, and a bag vendor takes care of the bags. The bags work, they reduce trash. The con on flat fee with bags is that you have someone on staff overseeing the flat fee, and again, the perception residents have with purchasing bags. So here are the draft numbers from the RFP using the range of numbers that was given to us by the town manager. The base cost, 2.1 million to 2.24 million with a 5% contingency. Flat fee alone, $373 a year, or 93.25 per quarter with the utility bill. A flat fee plus a user fee, bags, 250 a year for the flat fee, 62.50 per quarter, plus $1 to $2 per trash bag, depending on what size you choose. A flat fee plus the tax, $300 a year, $75 per quarter, $350,000 in the tax base. A tax plus a fat, flat fee plus a user fee, $200 for a flat fee per year, $1 to $2 per trash bag, $225,000 on the tax base. A tax and the user fee, bags, $1 to $2 on the trash bag, 1.3 million on the tax base. Now, these are just estimates at this time. So the committee recommends a flat fee. Flat fee is $373 per year for homeowners, $93.25 per quarter. This is a draft number as the contract is not yet signed. Everyone continues with their two carts. Everyone can call for bulky waste pickup. I believe that would be extra. And the hazardous waste program, we would have one, once a year. The next steps will be the approval for the trash hauler and set the contract, update the bylaws, have a material management plan, start the program on March 25th, 2024, future discussions of hazardous waste events, bulky items, and recycling center. The timeline at this point is in April 23rd, we had an education meeting with the committee, Town Council meeting tonight. In May, draft implementation plan. In June, approve implementation plan and grant. July, September, January 24, education. We, we need a lot of education to let the residents know what's going on. And then in March of next year, we would start the new program. So that's it for the presentation. If anyone has any questions, Ms. Congdon is here, will answer all your questions. I'll try the best I can. We also have some committee members here tonight as well if they, if they'd like to speak. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank the committee for all the hard work and many hours away from home in the evening, and Irene for driving all the way over here, providing guidance to, to the committee. And Mike, Counselor Marquetti, appreciate you stepping up on this one. Congratulations on that. But I do have a couple of questions on it. The flat fee, the residents go, the council goes with the flat fee, right? It'll be an enterprise fund. Are you guys looking at taking those two individuals, maybe a vehicle into, into consideration that that flat fee would cover that? Or I heard Counselor Marquetti's talk about putting that into the budget, and how much would that increase? Because you have municipality fees now we have to pay for, which is 70, 80, $100,000 per year. So does that, that 373 include all of that in there? It does?
Yes, as of the information that we were given of that, the, the parameters of the range, we took the highest level, and even with the 5%, that would include that.
Then also the consideration of the bulk pickup, obviously, the town would no longer get that free, put it outside, schedule on Monday, and it just disappears magically out of thin air.
I think in the current RFP, it's that the resident would then deal directly with the hauler.
Now.
Hopefully do promotion of reuse, and that there's some really great waste zero kind of program, zero cost options, that they could put it online and say, I have this item free, and then somebody else could take it for free, or and promote reuse of that charities like Salvation Army, Goodwill, Savers can come and take those items as well. So it's a way to promote it if you have a small fee for it.
So a lot of education has to happen.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate the fact this is something that we did in 2019, and the first thing came is, was education for the town, because it's been like this for quite some time. I know you guys discussed, I didn't attend every meeting, but I watched every meeting. I know you guys discussed, you got that flat fee, let's say 373, but I know you discussed single-family, and then maybe duplexes, triple-deckers would pay a little bit more, it'd be a tiered process, depending on the type of residency. Is that still into play?
The committee didn't recommend one way or the other. I think that's up to the council, working with the town manager to decide how you want to operate. Our, our charge was to say, this is the, the direction we want to go, and that's what we voted on.
Okay. Now, another thing that I heard, and I may, I may have misheard, was there's a 5% increase, right?
Contingency.
For just the contingency plan. Does that go up every single year? And how long would this contract go for? 10 years usually?
That would be a question for the town manager, I believe.
Yeah, I, we've asked for a five-year contract on that, and in the RFP that we put out, it was asked to have a 2% increase per year. But we do have different proposals that we've worked on, because we did have two companies who responded to this. We haven't finally negotiated on it.
Okay. I do know, you know, and I did a little bit of research on it, pay-as-you-throw with the bags does hurt the lower-income side, because you're paying $2, $3. Some might, we've seen the towns go to 5 and 8, we've had that discussion. And so in that reason, I mean, I'm, I'm happy with the flat fee. I am happy with it. It doesn't go off the property taxes. But I do have a question. If you do the enterprise fund, let's just say you start charging the community at a certain date, does, I'm trying to say here. So you started, does it automatically every resident will start getting a fee, starting, let's just say July 1st, new fiscal year?
Well, I would, I would recommend we not start until next year with the fees.
Yeah.
Only because, as you well know, we had a 20-year contract for free garbage pickup until 2027, and we lost three years of that. And it's not my wish to take nine more months away from the residents. So we do have to start it this year, but I would prefer we not start charging them until next year.
Okay.
It should start at the beginning of the fiscal year, and since, and since the contract is ending in March of next year, we need to start it this year. But I would, I would ask that we hold off on, on the fees until, I'd say, June of next year, because that would be the second quarter.
Okay. I'm just asking that question because some people may opt out since it's a.
Some people can opt out. I would say counselors should not opt out. You should help, you should join with the community.
I appreciate that guidance. Thank you. The other portion of it is the transfer station that we've talked about. We kind of, I kind of waited to, to hear what you guys came up with, and how it's going to go, and let the Town Council vote, but we are looking at a transfer station. When we did the study a few years ago, it was possibly 10 to 20% of loss, because you'll start buying permits, or using permits, which could be $300, $400, and it could be ran by an organization like Casella, because they have the property in 21 need. Is that still kind of the number that you guys would be looking at? That, obviously, if you lose 10, 20%, you're also increasing the price of, of a flat fee to cover the costs.
To my knowledge, this committee was just to find the funding of the curbside program. So I think when you put together the material management plan of the plan on how this works and the details of which department's doing what, if the, you know, the billing is being done through the assessor's office, that, you know, all those details of that billing operation, what's going to happen with the bulky items, and then you can add in there, you know, who's going to operate a transfer station. I think this has to come first because we got a deadline.
Understood. Thank you so much. And I, I'll leave it at that. I will say I do support the flat fee process, and, and I'll be voting that way this evening. And I thank you again for all the hard work you guys did.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate all the work you've done.
I don't know, did any, did you want to come up and speak? Do any of the committee members want to speak at all? Can if you want. They sat through as many meetings as I did.
I'd probably be remiss if I didn't come up here and talk about trash, recycling. I was very glad that, to be appointed to this committee. I thank Mike for, and all the committee members. We, we worked well together, bouncing ideas off each other's specialties. It was important, as, as the citizen member, it was important for me to make sure that there was very little to any change for the residents. If you take 6,300 households, if, if you say, okay, two people live in each household, that's over 12,000 people that'll be impacted by this program. So by changing it as little as possible, we can ensure that we're not going to create new problems. One of the situations that we focused on was the fact that enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. We need to make sure that we give the residents all the rules and regulations and the ability, and then enforce those rules and regulations. It's always been a hard situation. I've come before many committees and many councils during, since 2007, and if I came to the town with any type of idea or suggestion, I got told, there's a contract, we can't break the contract. If I went to the Board of Health, there's a contract, we can't break the contract. This is the town's opportunity, that the contract will be going away. Yes, it's going to be difficult, because now there's no more free ride, we're going to have to pay for it. But I think we came up with an equitable way to pay for it. And as far as the apartments go, there are, there are a lot of little things that still have to be worked out, like transfer station stuff. And when it comes to billing, only the landlords are going to be billed. You're not going to have individual bills going out to 6, 6,300s. So it's going to be important for our landlords to understand that when the enforcement comes around, the fines go to the landlord, not the tenant, and it's the landlord's responsibility for the care and maintenance of his property and that trash. I don't want to go on anymore. I hope the council, I hope I have an opportunity to work with the future Waste Management Committee, and thank you very much.
So just before I, I close, Irene would like to come up here and ask a couple of questions about billing and the bylaw, and who she would be working with after this, because she is still here to help us with this program, and I think that's the end of this committee, so I'll let her.
Hi. So the committee was charged to giving you their recommendation, so they gave you their recommendation, but you still have my technical assistance time, and I don't know which department you want, if I'm just going to work with the Board of Health or town administrator on the implementation plan, you know, because those little details should be figured out, and the biggest thing is billing. So I know Francine has been working very hard and needs that assistance to keep on So I know Francine has been working very hard and needs that assistance to keep on figuring out if flat fee, it's all about the billing and to making sure the software works and everything is set. So that's a big ask. So I don't know, who, who am I going to help if you want my continued assistance to work on the implementation plan?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Irene, I think it would be best to work with the town manager's office on that. We'll work on that and get all the information that we need together and we'll try to get it back to you. We still certainly will have other departments involved, Board of Health and so forth and billing, but I think it would be a good place to start in the town manager's office.
Great. And the other one is I know we have bylaws that say certain things that with this new change in program need to be updated. So I just want to make sure you guys highlight that, that, get that on the thing because if you're going to do any billing, that changes the bylaw.
Certainly.
And to make sure that that's...
Mr. Chairman?
Council Steve.
Yeah, okay, just to clarify, can you, do you have emails of potential actual bylaws that we will need? Do you have any possible texts or anything like that?
It's very specific for your town of what you, I haven't even seen your current bylaws, but I think it says free trash because you haven't paid any...
Well, it basically, it doesn't specify that.
And the type of program it is.
Yeah.
So I'm here to help. I just want to...
Okay, we'll definitely have to email back and forth and get some clarity because that's, those, those bylaws are probably going to my subcommittee, so.
Council Adams, then Council Lozlo.
Just, Council Marquetti, real quick, sir, just looking at, when are we looking at voting on the recommendation?
Can vote on it anytime. If you want to vote on it tonight, that's fine. If you want to wait, have a special meeting, that's fine with me. Whenever you want to vote on it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I did talk to...
I think what we have to do is we have to look at the, the election calendar. The clerk's office will tell you when we have to have the vote in by and then it will be on the ballot. My question was, after all the discussion, was it going to the ballot?
No, no ballot.
So there's no ballot question, just a council vote?
The vote, the council would have to vote to create an enterprise fund and it's not in, in a flat fee. Well, that's the enterprise fund, the flat fee program. Correct?
No, flat fee, the first one is just the accounting mechanism.
All right. All right.
Council Adams.
Just, Council Lozlo's saying, I, I think one of those, this is where we have to take this vote, even though your recommendation comes to us, which the flat fee, I agree wholeheartedly with, but if the, if five of us decide, well, we're going to do property taxes, we have to have an in by the, we have to have the vote before a certain date in April at the end to make it to the ballot through the town clerk's office.
That has to be done by the end of the month.
Okay, just, I just want to make sure, so, yeah, if you're already working with the chair, hands off.
Chairman, if I could finish?
Council Lozlo.
I would just like to say, this was a major undertaking and I think Council Marquetti, annual committee, did a fine job. I liked the survey approach, going out there and getting a feel of what the people are thinking. It's their money, their town. It's always good to go to a ballot if, if, if it's warranted. At the same time, I think that you got a good feel of what's going on in the town. We've got a lot of feedback as councillors, so I think job well done to you, your committee. Mr. Buckton, you've been involved with this, I don't know, since the town settlement, but I just want you to know, I'm very familiar with the gentleman, he does a fine job. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And so, Chairman Daniel, maybe as Irene was saying, we're voting, we're deciding to accept the flat fee, so the enterprise fund would be a separate vote, so that's how that would work. So I may have been a little off, wrong on what I told you tonight about voting. So I think eventually, though, we're going to have to vote on the enterprise fund. Thank you.
All right, can I see you after the meeting? All right, okay. Council Lozlo.
Thank you, Chair, through you. So the flat fee, it's for single family and six family, the same?
Each unit would pay.
Oh, or the, by the unit?
Each unit would pay.
So flat fee by the unit?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The homeowner is responsible, but each unit, I'm going to presume the homeowner would pass it on to the renter.
Just to understand, there's not going to be flat fee on a single house and a six family, same fee, one fee?
No, it's going to be per unit. So if it's a single family, it'd be one fee. If it's a six family, there'll be six fees.
Thank you.
Yep. But like I said, it's still the homeowner's responsible, so. All right? Are we, are we good?
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, oh, sorry, Council Revis.
Just to clarify, so your recommendation does not include the pay as you throw, it's just the flat fee?
That's correct. That was the committee's decision.
Okay.
Council Steve.
I would like to point out that one of the things that we were talking about, though, is, there was definitely consensus on the committee, although it wasn't part of the formal vote, that if we, if we see a need for it, we can fall back to a pay as you throw. But at the point, at this point, it is definitely a flat fee setup.
I will add one thing that it was pretty much the theme of the committee, that we need better enforcement on trash.
Yes.
And so we may be looking at some funding so that we can hire people to do enforcement. Thank you.
Council Lozlo.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I keep hearing enforcement on the trash. I mean, I don't see anything wrong on the road with the trash. I'm not sure why we keep saying enforcement, enforcement. I think the Board of Health and the enforcement officer, they're doing a great job. So I agree, maybe you need a, when you get that point, maybe look at it a different way, but I think they're doing a great job right now, so. Thank you.
Council Montigny.
Thank you, through you to Council Marquetti. The survey came back with the majority of citizens saying pay as you throw and the lowest response was for flat rate. How did you come to the decision to go with the losing option from the citizen survey?
That was the committee's decision.
Is there any reason is that they didn't want to go with what the citizens want?
Well, I think that, I can't speak for the, I can only speak for myself, but the committee, I think they felt it was a fair program that instead of each household paying the same amount, whether you have six family or one family, they thought it was fair if each fan, each apartment, each unit paid the same amount of money.
Okay, I just don't like trampling over the taxpayers' opinions, but the pay as you throw plus the flat rate was an option too. That's fair.
That's right. That's up to the council if you want to, if you want to...
It includes what the citizens want.
That's right. I mean, the...
With what you want.
The committee recommended, it's up to the council, you can either accept it, amend it, or reject it.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds a little more, you know, good flavor. Thank you.
Once I sit down over there, I, I might have a, a different point of view, but I told the committee, I would present what they wanted and that's what I've done. Thank you. Yep.
Just a minute. Council Lozlo.
I saw the same thing with the survey and I respect the recommendation of the committee and I know it's the council's call, so to speak. I would be in favor of putting the two options on the ballot. Let them decide. I mean, we have time, we have an election coming up, we have two weeks to have a vote here to put the options, two options on there and the recommendation and the pay as you go and then let the people decide. I would feel more comfortable with that than a handful of people making the call for the majority of the town in this, in this instant. So I think we really need to take a look at this as a council and see what the feeling of the council is, whether to go to the ballot with a question on either or, or if you feel that the council should make the call, then we make the call. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Mr. Gregor.
Good evening to, to Council Marquetti, Montigny's question. I want you to know, if you had a chance to watch some of the videos, the committee really did take that into consideration and I know myself, I went in with one opinion, I kept my, my mind open to all the options. I think everybody did. I'm pretty sure everybody on the committee changed their mind at least once on the funding source and what we thought we should use. And we did see the survey come back and it was overwhelming for bags, I agree, pay as you throw. However, the feedback, I think everyone has received from the survey is people were confused by the survey because it was a little vague because it was very early on in the process. So as a committee, we looked at what we thought was best for the town as a whole. When it came to either taxes or flat fee, we said to ourselves, if the average single family home has a value of this and it's got one family in it and the average multifamily, which if you look at the tax values, may be equal in value, even though it's got three to six times the amount of people in it, it wouldn't be fair to have a tax-based system that charges them the exact same rate. So we chose overwhelmingly seven to one on the committee and it was a broad spectrum of people on the committee. It was citizens, it was health department members, it was everybody, that if we went with a flat fee system where if it's X number for a single family and you've got a three family, it's going to be X number times three because you've really got three living units in that building. And to a certain extent, we had to look at that, the numbers that came back from the survey, we had to temper it a little bit with what we knew was real data. And this was what we thought was the most equitable system. So we're not trying to slight the survey. The survey was just that, it was a survey, it wasn't a vote. We, as a, as a committee, really looked what was best for the entire town and that's what we came up with. And there's a lot more, there's a lot more going on. If you watch some of the meetings, you might see some of what we're talking about. I know Council Steve and I didn't agree on everything and by the end, we did, which was great. It was one of the, probably the best committees I've seen, it worked really well together. And I can honestly say, I think, and I think most people think, that this is the most fair way to administer this program. And I'd be glad to talk with you, answer any questions now or later for what I was feeling and what I think most of the committee members are feeling.
Follow-up, Council Montigny?
Yeah, thank you. To the speaker, no, I, I see what you mean, it was something like $93 a quarter, something like that. So if you manage to only use 20 bags and you're going to spend $40 that quarter and then the flat fee just makes up the difference rather than the full 93, maybe the difference per citizen becomes $30 a month. Now you're adding 40 for the bags plus 30 and that user is only paying 70 that quarter, which is even more fair than 93. I think maybe people are a little, I can't speak for the committee, but I think people are worried about the enforcement of the rule of pay as you throw. And I think, I think, you know, I, I just, there's other towns around here that do it and I think that I could trust our community to do it, especially if you refine the bylaws and, and put some more sort of support for, for those things. It becomes more fair and it becomes cheaper for the citizen because still at flat fee, you're getting better. You're charging six families six times, but that poor Council Marquetti's not going to be using $93 worth of trash in, in a quarter. If it's pay as you throw, he says he can use one bag every two weeks, so I don't know. It's just more fair, so.
I agree. And one of the things we talked about is possibly in the future, I think Council Steve's mentioned it, is we could phase bags into the program.
Right.
And maybe defer some of that cost out. There's, there's definitely a lot of ways to skin this cat. Some of the concerns we have with bags are the only way to know the bag system is working is a single camera on the back of a pickup, on the back of the trash truck that's going to identify that's a yellow bag with the Southbridge seal and not a yellow bag somebody bought on Amazon for 32 cents. Really tough to monitor and we could find ourselves with a budget shortfall really quick if that sort of thing starts to happen. Plus, we thought at $2 a bag, there might be a chance for illegal dumping to start to happen, which is a real concern. Some people are going to say, "I'm not paying $2 for that bag, I'm going to take it up by one of the dead ends in town that I live on that I don't want to see trash on the ground either." This was a complex issue, it really was and, you know, the council can definitely go over it and it's, it's your purview in the end.
But doesn't Worcester do it and they have like six or seven times as many people and they have it on track?
And Irene could probably speak to that better than I can. I, I've no, never lived in Worcester, Southbridge guy.
Well, no, thanks for the, thanks for the discussion. I appreciate it.
Council Adams, then Council Revis, then Council Lozlo.
Well, I was going to say not to belabor this, but I guess we are. But it's a good presentation. The fact is, if you, if you didn't watch the meetings or you just heard third party, it's a complicated situation for the town or any town that'd accept this. I would, to, to Council Lozlo's point, I, I would say we represent the town, this is what we're voting in for, but it's also, we did this with marijuana. We did a non-binding resolution through, through the vote to see if the voters really wanted cannabis in the town. So it's not a bad idea, we just have to do it soon. I would state on this, there's, in Worcester, they do do the bags. The problem with Worcester, when you do those bags, it really does affect the lower income individuals because now you're paying from 15 cents a bag to $2 a bag, $3 a bag. And then like Steve had stated, you, now you're trying to bring a camera into the situation to count, but you could buy, let's say it's red for Southbridge, but I found red bags right online for 15 bucks. Now that red bag would probably have the town seal on it, but can the guys and gals who are picking it up see it all the time or go, or do they have time to go out there and take a look? So that would be my concern. Another issue is the fact that, let's just say you do the enterprise fund and then you do a pay as you throw scenario where you're doing the bags as well. If we run short that year, that's coming straight out of the operating budget. There's a town that just started it and they're already in the hole, over $100,000 for their operating budget. So I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I do, supposedly it doesn't pick up the, have an issue with more trash, but, you know, there was a article about Worcester's that in the richer population side, they didn't have that problem with trash. On the poorer side, they did have a problem with that because $2 a bag is pretty expensive for a family. And so, you know, I just ask, we take that in consideration and we give ourselves a week or so to figure out, well, we, you know, ask the questions. This is a perfect opportunity to ask the questions, even offline as well. Thank you.
Council Revis, then Council Lozlo.
Yeah, so I, I have watched some of the meetings. I think I was present at one of them, but my concern is, and I would definitely be in favor of a non-binding question, because in the survey, you didn't get as many renters responding to the survey, so my concern is that those homeowners would pass the cost to their renters and it might be more than the cost of getting bags. And so my concern is that, you know, if, if, if I'm seeing a bill as a homeowner that is a little bit less and I know my tenants are paying for bags, I might be less inclined to pass that cost on to them if I know that they're buying bags, right, to, you know, to pay for their trash that they're making. Also, in the presentation that you had at the Southbridge Business Partnership meeting, I do like the idea that, of the bags reducing overall trash and the numbers or the percentage, I think was very positive and, you know, and I think that with the education and looking at your plan with education, I think, I think coupling that, you know, with the bags, I think will help those lower-end users. So I would be in favor of the non-binding question, but I'd like to see sort of a combination of things so that our concern for those renters, you know, might be misplaced because if they're ending up having to pay more rent, then we're not really helping them.
That's a good concern.
Council Lozlo.
Again, I commend the committee, diverse opinions, like the council. And the discussion is healthy and to make people understand why we do what we do, that's why a campaign, a question on the ballot would open up discussion across the board, pro, con, and I say we throw it to the people. When we do schools, we, we have a vote. When we do marijuana, we have a vote. Fire station, we had a vote. For options, it's their town. So for myself, I, I was never afraid of a democracy of going to the people. I give our voters a lot of credit. I think they can handle it. I think they're smart enough to figure out what the debate is and then after, when a campaign takes place for or against, then you end up with the final answer, at least you're getting a true read, as the council said, even if it's non-binding, it gives council some sort of direction. And I think we would discuss it or if it was binding, it wouldn't bother me either way. I just feel that let the people have a piece of the action. On the discussion, right now we have a very, very angry electorate, as the surveys showed. And I think that moving forward, letting them in on the discussion would probably make it a lot easier to, impalatable for them with the final choices. Thank you.
So I'm not quite sure how a ballot question would work. If you have a, do you want a tax or do you want a enterprise fund? Because if you want a tax, then you need a two and a half override. So would that be the question? If you want a tax? If you want a tax, you're voting for a two and a half override. If you want a flat fee, you're not voting for a two and a half. I'm not quite sure how the question would work. I'm just being honest with you. I don't know how it would work.
Mr. Chairman, on the recommendation of the committee, I would, the tax one doesn't seem to be anybody's favorite. So I would just eliminate that. It's common sense. And now go with two options and put the two options on the ballot.
So the options would be flat fee.
Flat fee and pay as you throw.
Flat fee and pay.
You cannot have pay as you throw on its own because it would not cover the cost. You have to combine it with either taxes or a flat fee.
I understand what you're saying.
So flat fee with pay as you throw?
It would be flat fee and then flat fee, pay as you throw.
Yes.
You'd have two different ones.
Anyone else?
I'm okay with that.
You're all set? Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Run out.
Item number eight, citizens' forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council tonight at the podium on an issue not on tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. Please identify yourself.
My name is Stephanie Rivers. I reside at ninety-two Harrington Street, Southbridge. On March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-year-old Eric Diaz was able to bring a concealed gun with live ammunition and without a license to carry into Southbridge Middle High School. Eric Diaz was inside the school with the gun and live ammunition for four hours from seven fifty AM to eleven fifty AM, after which the gun was transported by a second student minor off school grounds and into the community and still has not been recovered, which places this community at risk. Yet no lockdown was ordered. In addition, Eric Diaz wasn't arrested immediately that day, but instead, three days later, even though he made a video of himself with the gun inside a boys' bathroom inside the school on March thirteenth. On April third, two thousand twenty-three, joint statements by the school administration and the Southbridge Police began to circulate on social media. As of April sixth, two thousand twenty-three, a third joint statement was issued. The public is only now being notified because the news media began reporting on the matter. Eric Diaz is currently on house arrest with an ankle bracelet, but while on house arrest, continues to threaten students using mobile and internet communications. Southbridge Public Schools has a serious problem with common sense and what is right and what is wrong if a concealed gun with ammunition was able to cross the threshold of a school with children inside by an individual whom used poor judgment, and then failing to notify the public about this for almost a month. I'm trying to wrap my head around how this was justified with the statements that were issued last week, but I just can't. I really can't. It was an epic fail on the part of Southbridge School Administration and Southbridge Police. You placed everyone at risk, teachers, students, and the community. And everyone involved in the poor decision-making needs to be held accountable, beginning with the receiver and the principal of the high school. If we look back at March twenty-seventh, at Covenant School in Nashville, Tennessee, it took that shooter only sixteen minutes to go into that school, head-shooting and killing six people, three of which were nine years old, before she was taken down. We had a student in our school system for four hours with a gun, making videos in a boys' bathroom. And yet no lockdown was ordered. In two thousand fifteen, two students at Southbridge Middle High School reported seeing a student with a gun. The school was immediately placed on lockdown. It was later determined that student was holding a stapler. In two thousand nineteen, a teacher at Southbridge Middle High School reported a round of ammunition on the stairwell. The school was immediately placed in lockdown. It was later determined that teacher planted the ammunition, and that teacher was immediately arrested on sight. Yet a student was in Southbridge Middle High School with a gun and ammunition for four hours on March thirteenth, and no lockdown was ordered. The student was allowed to leave the building, to hand the gun off and ammunition to another student minor that drove the gun and ammunition off the school grounds and into the community. And the student who had brought the gun and ammunition into the school for four hours wasn't arrested until three days later. You cannot guarantee me that that wasn't or isn't a threat when a gun is still out The police take an oath to serve and protect. Exactly whom are they serving and whom are they protecting? Because I don't feel safe. The teachers don't feel safe. The students and the children don't feel safe. My niece and my nephew were in school that day. My nephew has special needs. He does not have the cognitive ability to understand a situation like that. Who protected him? Who's going to go tell his parents that it was nothing to be worried about when we all know in fact it was? The fear and the stress that was added to those children that day? Town Council, I am requesting that you become involved. Take action to include an investigation into the actions of March thirteenth. Perform an audit on the school budget and where the money is going, and begin proceedings to dissolve the receivership with the state and the school system. In the eight years that it has been in place, no major improvements have been made. In fact, the opposite has occurred. It's time to act. No more brushing it under the rug. Enough is enough. In closing, the residents of this town no longer feel safe. The teachers do not feel safe. The children in this town no longer feel safe. Please get involved now, before someone is killed by another gun that has made its way into the school. Thank you.
Is there anything else that would like to address the council tonight?
I was planning on, I'm sorry. My name is Hector. I've been living in Southbridge for two years now, a little bit over two years. In the same year that I had my first kid, I became father to my nephew. Scariest experience of my life. I'm facing a six-year-old and a seventeen-year-old at the same time. No experience, no prior knowledge. But I do have knowledge of being in the Worcester District School System. She mentioned a few cases in which schools were locked down. My freshman year in high school, I had eighteen lockdowns. It was supposed to be a senior prank. I don't know how that's funny, but that's what it was labeled. However, I did feel safe. I got the opportunity to sit outside while my teachers comforted us and assured us that nothing was going to happen to us. It was an interruption to the school day, yes. But I got the opportunity to see my teachers as a protector, not just an educator. Teachers are supposed to be the first, the first example of what a grown adult should be. Our school faculties are supposed to build on that. They're not, it's not just a job. Anybody that goes into that type of career, it is something to be admired if it's taken seriously and if it's taken to the degree it's supposed to be taken to. But I don't feel like that's happening now. My freshman year in high school, I had a teacher named Joe Nystrom. He now works as one of the educational board members in Cape Cod. This man gave me the attention every single day till I learned the basics of math because prior to that, I was just moved along by teachers who thought it was just a job. This is not just a job. This is the foundation for tomorrow's civilians. This is the foundation for tomorrow's police, the foundation for tomorrow's lawyers, council Without a good foundation, what do they have to stand on? Now, I am taking it as a serious job. My nephew, my daughter are going to have an example at home. I can assure you of that. I'm going to hold them to the standard that I hold myself. But I can't control a school system who, when I initiated connection with them before even transferring my nephew, I asked for a meeting with the faculty to explain the circumstances under which he was coming to the school district. That was not honored. Until a month ago, there is an online portal that I did not have access to until just a month ago, at the end of the school year. He's been there since the beginning, and there are teachers that don't even know he's been there since the beginning of the school year. How does that make sense? And me, myself, I got to experience and witness, and it hurts to this day, the principal of the high school, along with three or four others, corralled a student whose body language yelled, "Help me." And the only thing they acknowledged was that his phone was in his hand. He wasn't viewing the phone. It was just in his hand. That's the only thing you acknowledge? With a depressive demeanor? A dark cloud on his head and that's what you acknowledged, the phone? I've gone to this school and I've asked multiple times, is there a PTA council? And I've never gotten a reply. And not a month after, when I saw that student with his head down, there was an instance of a star athlete student who was looking at a possibility of not being able to practice his, what he saw for his future anymore, take his life. Now, I'm not asking the teachers or the faculty at the schools to be knowledgeable in psychological traumas and psychological things, but if you see a student, I'm sorry, but if I saw you blatantly disregard the student's demeanor because he had a phone in his hand, that's not the only student you're doing it with. That's a common practice in this school. And I saw it with my own eyes. We're putting emphasis on things that don't need the emphasis. I had a cell phone when I was in high school. Plenty of people had cell phones when they were in high school. But if your response to a possible life-threatening situation is not, hey, you want to come into my office and talk to me about what's going on, rather, why is your phone in your hand? How is that normal? How is that just? How is that the automatic and first response in a situation like that? These are the people that I'm leaving my nephew in their hands? Is that fair? Is that the same treatment that we got when we were in school ourselves? Because at least in my hands, with pretty much every teacher that I had in that freshman year of high school, pretty much every single teacher that I had put an emphasis on my education, but also put an emphasis on my demeanor as a student. And if we don't want to go to our jobs depressed and have our bosses kick us down when we're already feeling down, how can we expect our students to have to go through it? Simply because their phone fell out of their pocket or fell out of their backpack, or they forgot to take their headphones out of their ears before going back to class after lunch? How is that more important than a gun in a school? How is it possible to have five hours go by before anything is reported? And when it is reported, to have a month go by after that without a real response? I was just communicating to a man that I just met. It seems to me like they did a lockdown at the school today just to show face, just to show that they're doing something, that they're practicing something. What's the point of practicing it if the, when the moment comes, you don't put it into practice? In my book, that's a failure. And if I were to fail like that in my job, I'd be gone. They also brought up a meeting just last Friday for this one thing. My point, in my ears, a lot of people said they were going to show up. A lot of parents, a lot of students. Ever since that announcement came out, the numbers have dwindled into what you see today. My understanding of that is that the school, we can keep it in four walls. We can keep it and control it ourselves. If we allow them to go over there, it's going to go beyond our heads and beyond something that we can control. Well, you know what? It's about time it goes beyond their heads. Because yes, I'm only showing examples of small instances that don't really amount to the degree of what the situation is. However, they may be small, but they're being practiced. They may be small, but they're being ignored. And I don't send my child to school to be ignored. I send my child, and I tell him all the time, those teachers are representatives of me. Disrespecting them is disrespecting me. However, I do not disrespect my nephew. Jokingly perhaps, and I've asked him to let me know when I'm crossing the line, because I'm somebody that jokes around all the time. But I can understand, hey, there's a line and you're crossing it. I feel like the line was crossed a long time ago in regards to the school's response and the school's accountability. Nobody's taking responsibility over anything nowadays, and it's really disrupting society in itself. And this is what we're teaching our kids now. To just allow, don't show up, don't try. Somebody else is going to fix it. Somebody else is going to talk up. Somebody else is going to figure things out. It'll all fall together on its own. That's not what this society was built on. And that's not what I choose to show my nephew or my daughter or any of my nephews.
Just a second. Counsel, I need a motion to extend the time that this.
So.
We have a motion by Counsel Lozlo, a second by Counsel Ryan to extend the motion, to extend the time this, this citizen is allowed to speak. All those in favor? Opposed? Please continue.
Just thank you for your time. Thank you for your response. Have a good one.
Very good.
My name is Francine Farland. I'm a resident.
My name is Francine Farland. I'm a resident, Southbridge 257 Mechanic Street. Couple of things with what was, has been said tonight in articles in the paper. I was held at gunpoint at McDonald's September 8th, 1985. Please don't put our children through that and what I went through. I, it took me years. It's been 38 years and I can tell you every detail about that gun. I can tell you it was Sergeant Kumalas who responded to the scene with his, with the police officers. I received nothing but support from the Southbridge PD that day. And the EMTs, everything back then was top-notch in my, you know, for my comfort level and support. But this brought that memory back to me. So I, I beg you, get involved. Don't put these kids and students, teachers, even in our town hall, we had, prior to COVID, we had training for active shooter training given to us by the police and fire department. We asked at a staff meeting here in this town, this town forum, not DAS, but we had a staff meeting. We asked for safety training. The previous town manager, because of COVID, whatever the reasoning, we never received it. We have brand new employees in this building. The same thing with the library. Every town building should have active shooter training every year repetitively. I worked at hotels. We had fire, we had fire drills. Employees did not take it seriously until the building was on fire. We had a gas leak in the building. HR did not take it seriously. He walked out of the building and lit up a cigarette. The fires, the fire and police take authority at every hotel and conference center when you are there. Please out there, listen to those alarms and leave your room. Okay? Don't stay there and poke your head out, as is done in my past, I've witnessed it, and say to a fire policeman, fire or police, "Should I leave my room?" Common sense, the alarm is going off, leave your room. I had a deaf employee. She beat HR out of the building when it was on fire and when the gas leak. She met me because I knew sign language. She came directly to me, said, "What's going on?" I turned her around, pointed at the smoke. Here comes my HR person that did payroll. So your training has to start with HR and your upper management and organizing with your police and fire to be here and your first responders. And I'm not talking just police and fire, your DPW, they are out on the street as well. They need to know active shooting and what to do. My brother went to a training course and learned about EMT and tourniquets and he loved it. Of course, he was on the fire department for many years. Training is the key. That is not the place to cut the budget, number one. I was bitten also in Arizona by rattlesnake. I have a story of life I'm telling you. So I had six fire department personnel respond to the scene. We don't even have six on our crew, I bet you during a shift. I had three to respond to the snake, three to respond to me. I'm just saying that the priority A has to be training, training for safety, training for your employees, your staff, your stu-, especially your students, teachers. As the person spoke before, those, those kids are our future. A parent does not need to be at, at work worrying about what is going on with their child at school. It interferes with their work life as well. Because they cannot concentrate, they're worried about their child. Correct. I'm just saying as a resident, there needs to be more priority with training, with education and safety protocols within a town. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening?
Hello, my name is Angel LeBron. I'm a student at Southbridge High School and I'm a representative of the student body. And after the events that transpired on March 13th, I can tell you firsthand that I'm extremely scared to attend a school where the teachers are unaware of basic protocols to be met with a, a possible gun threat. We, we, I can confirm as a student that we did have a lockdown today and I did not feel safe whatsoever in the room that I was in because teachers did not know, the, the teachers in our building did not know how to handle the protocol. They didn't know where students were supposed to be. They didn't know what students were supposed to be in what rooms. I was told by another teacher that students were communicate, that teachers were communicating via Google chat about where missing students were during the, the lockdown. And it's just, it's, it's scary to know that the, nothing is being done. And as students, we haven't been told anything about what's been going on. So we are still just expected to, all the knowledge that we have of what happened is from the news, from our parents, from everything going on in social media. So we're just expected to go back to the school where nothing, nothing's changing. They haven't done anything. They haven't told us anything. They have not communicated with us at all as students. We're just expected to go to a building where we know empirically from facts that is not safe, is not safe to be in there. A gun was in the building for four hours at least and every student in that building, their lives were at risk and nothing was done. Nothing has been done. And as far as I'm concerned, nothing is still being done. And as a student, this is really, really scary. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. You know, I did not wanna get up here and speak tonight. There's nobody from the school here to represent, so I seem to be the guy that gets stuck falling, you know, kinda gets stuck landing on the sword again. Just a couple of things I appreciate and I respect. Every, all the comments that were made tonight, especially by the student, thank you. And we can talk offline about that. But I gotta say, last Wednesday, I spoke for almost three hours to, to staff at the high school. And when we walked out of there, they appeared to be very satisfied. And once they heard what I had to, my, the explanation that I'll give tonight. We're also speaking on Wednesday night this week at four o'clock in the auditorium and we'll stay all night if we need to with parents and students that are concerned. So I was also called all weekend by concerned teachers, by parents. I have children in the neighboring district and I understand all that and I respect all that. So there certainly isn't to get up here and tell you all the things we did right or all the things we did wrong. But what I will say is, in policing, we work in facts. It's easy to get up here tonight after the fact and go over everything because you know what happened because I told everybody what happened last Wednesday night. I'm not defending the receiver. I'm not gonna get involved in the politics of whether or not the state should be here. They can fight their own battles. What I'm here to talk about is the actual, the public safety, the police side of the house and the things I control and the things I'm responsible for. So on Wednesday the 13th, at seven, about 7:50 in the morning, there was a, a video posted on social media and we got an anonymous tip. One of my acting lieutenants got an anonymous tip. I don't know if it was a resident or a student or a staff member at 11:50. So four hours later, we got a tip that a student, a 20-year-old student was waving with, they didn't know if it was a firearm or not. It could have been a BB gun. They weren't sure if it was a bathroom at the school. Within five minutes, we had two armed SROs and one armed Quinn Sigerman, security detail, three armed police officers at that school. Within five minutes, we had eyes on the threat. All we knew was there was one person who may or may not have had a gun, who, in the tip was four hours old. So four hours before our arrival there, he had this firearm. We now had eyes on him. We had him detained. We brought him down to the principal's office. He was searched. We searched his house. We seized his cell phone and I'll get into that in a minute. That took probably two weeks to get a search warrant signed. And so we could actually dump the phone and go over all the other evidence, which led to a second person being charged. So the, the building was not locked down that day. The school didn't call for a lockdown, but obviously we could call for a lockdown. But the reasoning was, we had one person that we knew of that may or may not have had a firearm. They, we had them. We had them in custody within minutes. We went right to the vice, I think the principal from the junior high school, two of my SROs and a third police officer all had this person. So I don't know how much safer or how much quicker we could have possibly detained that threat. There was a second person. That second person, again, after hours of videotaped footage and watching it and slowing it down, yep, 7:50 in the morning, the person had a firearm. The staff wasn't sure if it was the bathroom. We confirmed it was the bathroom. We also had a federal agent, but this took a day to enhance that video footage that we had and confirm that it was a firearm. So at that particular point in time, on that date on the 13th, we didn't have enough evidence really to take anybody into custody. People still have rights. This is America. We do have to investigate things. We can't wrap things up in, in an hour like a crime scene or, or a show on television. This took hours and hours and days and days of work and investigative work. But the threat, again, just to come back to that, it was contained immediately. When I spoke last week, we had a staff member tell me in front of probably 60 or 70 staff members that they knew about this at nine o'clock in the morning. And when I asked if they called the police department, they said no. So we didn't know about it for four hours. We contained the threat within five minutes. And I get it, but I'll say this, the school's not, the gun was not in that school for four hours. Absolutely not. That's just, it's not right. It's not fact. It's rumor. It was not. It was in there for, well, the exact time, it was not four hours because we were there at 11:50. So it was somewhere in between that. But the video footage of him leaving the school, now the second person leaving the school, was not a four-hour timeframe. So again, picture what we're working with on that day and I know it's hard to, to understand, but we don't really know when it happened. It said, it was posted at 7:50, but when did it happen? We didn't know if it was really in a bathroom and we didn't know if it was really a firearm. We know that now and I can confirm that now that we're here. And you know what? I'll even say, the communication with the school perhaps was poor because we should have been more, I should have been more transparent and I'll take the fall for that and push this out immediately upon getting it. But at that particular time, I didn't realize that this was gonna go into, just because we detained it, we contained it so quickly, it kinda took on a life of its own with rumors and we should have been out in front of it. And I've talked to Dr. Valar about that. I've talked to the staff about that. We're creating and we're implementing some new communication methods. Even all the staff, all the teachers have my contact information now. So if they don't feel like they're getting enough from the administration of the school, they know that they can call me. They know they can trust me. They also have SROs at the school assigned there every day that they can reach out to if they feel more comfortable telling them. So at this particular point in time, I believe that we were justified not calling a lockdown during that incident. But I will say this, I'm not perfect. After speaking with all the teachers in that assembly for teachers last week on Wednesday, taking the temperature in the room, recognizing some of the fear up there that I did not even know about and some things that have happened up there historically over the last couple of years and since the state's been in charge up there, I get it now. I understand the fear that a lot of these teachers and staff, I spoke to them. They've cried with me in front of me. I get it. It's a very difficult situation that they're working in. It's a horrible environment to work in, not just Southbridge, but in general, being an educator and being expected to have to defend children from being killed. I know that's not what you signed up for, but we will protect you. We're here to protect you. If there's issues with any staff and they know this and the teachers that, if there's any in the room tonight, you can call us anytime if you don't wanna speak with your administration or if there's any issues up there beyond what I'm concerned about tonight. My concern is that you feel safe. The kids need to feel safe. And I'll speak with the gentleman that came up tonight and so eloquently expressed some of his concerns because we'll work with the student body too. That's what we're here for, if nothing else. Kids should not have to go to school and be in fear. So I'm not saying that I disagree with everything that was set up here tonight, but the firearm certainly wasn't in that school for four hours. At that particular time, I felt that the men and women that worked for my department acted appropriately. We contained the threat. Now seeing how this, the life that this has taken on and taken the temperature, like I had said earlier, and speaking to hundreds of people involved in the school, I get why they feel the way that they do. I do. I'm not saying that I even disagree with it. And going forward, a lockdown or at least at minimum a shelter in place will be called immediately. You know, and there was a lot of questions during that, the session last week with the staff. They had a lot of issues. They had a lot of concerns. They made a lot of statements to me about how there was someone running around the building armed. Teachers were trying to apprehend them. Teachers weren't told while they were trying, and none of that was true. I spoke with, I asked teachers, identify, please tell me if you don't wanna say it in the open meeting, tell me privately, email me, call the town manager, call a counselor, call somebody. And nobody has come forward. So again, I think it just kinda got spun that we had teachers out there or not the police of the direction of the police, but the administration of the school. And I'm not here to defend anybody, but I don't believe that they ever directed teachers to go out and try to apprehend armed students. It's just, it's not fact. Again, I'm not perfect. Police department's certainly not perfect. But when we make mistakes, when we, when there's issues, I stand here. I can get up here when everything's going good and smile and wave and say how great things are, but I also have to stand up here when it's bad. But I don't wanna be confused with the school, with the administration, defending anybody. That's not me. That's not why I'm here. It's not the political, it's, it's not for me to get up and speak politically of whether or not they should be here, whether or not I should be back under town control. I'm here to say that that incident for the mistakes that we made or that you guys believe that we made, we're gonna correct them. It'll be improved. As far as lockdowns, I've been pressing the school. We did one several, well, not several years ago. I was the chief, probably in 16. We had a full drill. We had our regional SWAT team come in. We had weapons, blank rounds, smoke, the smell, the, the fire. You hear the alarms. It was a pretty intense training. There were several staff members that missed school for the following week after that because they were traumatized from that training incident. So I've tried as the chief, and again, I wish someone from the school was here to speak to it. I was told that we kinda hold off on that, on that big of a drill, that intensive a drill because a lot of the staff, especially the newest, newer teachers, had issues with anxiety and stress over those training exercises. I'm not here making it up. I'm just telling you facts. That's what it was. That's why even today, we did a much lesser version of a lockdown drill because I am pushing and I have been pushing and I'll continue to. And I believe with this now and after speaking with staff, before the next school year starts over the summer during a PD day, professional development day, we will have another one of those large-scale trainings and we'll invite all the town employees from various buildings. And we have a nice, big, beautiful high school. We'll come up there and we will do a large-scale event like we did a couple of years ago. And I kinda took some heat, for lack of a better word, for having it that intense. Cause there were some people that were pretty panicked during this training. But the way I look at it is, as a police officer is, the first time you hear a gunfire, the first time you smell gun smoke, it shouldn't be during an actual school shooting. You need to train. You need to train, train, train. I agree. The gentleman that spoke earlier, I agree with Francine. You need to train. You can't cut training. It's, it's a huge ordeal. And policing right now, that's all we, that's every day we train. Every single day we come to work, we have some kind of training exercise. So that will be coming. We've tried implementing it before. And for whatever reasons, I don't wanna look in the past because I can't control the past. But I can control now. So I'd like to, moving forward, make sure we get everything in order and do what we're supposed to be doing and make sure that the kids especially and the staff that has to be up there every single day feel safe. And that's our only mission. If I can come to work and everybody's safe, then I feel like that was a good day. So for all the, for anybody that is or doesn't feel safe or has issues, please, you know me, you see me, I'm in town every day. You know how to reach me. Come down to the police station. I'll be happy to sit with anybody privately. But tomorrow at four o'clock, we'll be at the school. I know it's early for the people at work. So I'll stay all night. Even at the school, at the staff meeting last week, we stayed late. Teachers stayed late because they didn't care. Didn't, the hours didn't mean anything to them. And I would have stayed all night talking to them, but I seen, it seems like, you know, it went well considering that the temperature in the room was very hot, very confrontational. But you know, it was respectful. It was polite. It was professional. And I heard your concerns and I'm here and that's why I'm saying now, I'm listening. I heard your concerns. And going forward, there will not be any issues. It will be locked down immediately. At the very least, a shelter in place. And again, not to hijack the meeting tonight, but I just feel like I needed to speak to it, representing the police department. The public on, at home needs to hear what we're doing, why we did it. It's just, it's easy to critique us and that's okay. I don't mind Monday morning quarterback. I really don't. Because it's a good thing. It's a training thing. We do debriefings. Whenever there's critical incidents in policing, we always do debriefings. That's the one important thing. The next time there's an incident, I hope there isn't one at the school, whether it's minor or a major incident, a violent incident, we're gonna debrief with all the staff. That was my recommendation. The receiver's on board with it. If there's ever anything similar to what happened, we will have a debriefing that night or at least the next day. So the staff and the students are not in limbo kinda thinking for, you know, several weeks, what's really going on. Press releases will not be vague anymore. I'm not a big fan of vagueness. I get heat sometime with the police department for being too transparent. We post everything on social media because I think the public has a right to know what's going on in their community. I think they need to know the facts as soon as I know the facts. Some people frown on that. I'm not speaking for the school, but they don't operate like that, like we do in policing. And I'm trying to work with them on kinda trending in that direction where when you get information, get it out immediately. The parents deserve it. The kids deserve it. You know, they're high school kids. They're not little kids anymore. They need to know what's going on so they can know the facts and they can know that they're safe. And that's all I have. I'll be happy to take any questions. I could stay here all night if needed, but I just wanted you to hear it from me.
Very good. Counsel Lazlo.
Chief, as chairman of PPP and I oversee police, fire and various departments, I just wanna commend you as a communicator to immediately try and put the truth out there because it automatically turns into a bonfire and people are throwing gas on it and it gets ugly. it, and it gets ugly. We can't change what happened in that school, and it was wrong. And I'm going to hang, I don't want to play the blame game, but you've got to hang on leadership. Not the teachers, the administration of that building under Ed Reform states that the principal is in charge of the building. All behavior, education, MCAT, falls on the shoulders of the administration. Due to the lack of leadership professionalism, that administrator should have been walked out of the high school that day. But because we're in a receivership, it doesn't work that way. Everybody knows how I feel about the receivership, it doesn't work, we see it in Southbridge day in and day out. We are all up here, and these councils are concerned, I'm telling you right now, we talk about it on a daily basis. This gentleman to my left is trying his darndest to get a conversation with the state, to end this receivership. They did not leave us with a blueprint on how to get out. They knew how to put us in, but there's no blueprint to get out. So we start petitions to try and enlighten the governor, try and enlighten the Department of Education. I think meetings, four o'clock, I will be there. I also, if there are any other meetings that we can get the state down here and say, please, enough is enough now, we've done nothing but go backwards. Everybody wants to start at a school committee meeting, and I commend the school committee, I commend Valar for holding hands and singing kumbaya, great things about the district. And then one day later, this happens. What does that tell you? In my world, you have to identify a problem before you can cure it. If you've got your head in the sand, you're not identifying the problem. People say, Scott, you're too negative. I'm not negative, I'm telling you the truth on what happens, and then when it happens, I'm an I told you so guy. The one thing about the past, you've got to know it, today, that gun in the school is the past. Going forward, what are you willing to do about that, Southbridge? That's what I say. When I was on school committee back in the dark ages, we had a Level One high school, we had a protocol book, and every teacher had it, every building had the training. A bomb scare, a fire, a gun incident, that book was in the schools. The state took over, I don't know where that book is, or even if it is there, but it's common sense approach that is lacking in so many ways. When I see a child come up here with the jacket, really? A high school kid knows?
No.
But $100, $225,000 administrator doesn't get it. I've got a problem with that, and I think the town, we just got to stand up and say enough is enough. Thank you.
Counsel Markey, then Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I think the issue that I have heard from some parents is the issue of the middle school and the high school. From what they tell me, that there's, there's, there's no blocking there. I mean, if you can go from the high school over to the middle school, middle school over to the high school, there's not, there's no locking between the two sides, and so that is their main concern that they've expressed to me. And I don't know if you can address that or not, if that can be something that could be looked at, make sure that, that they can't get easy access to each side of the schools. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm not going to stand up here and, it's not going to, I appreciate the comments, I really do, especially from that young man over there, sitting down at the bench. I, I mean, I think all the speakers were very, obviously very honest this evening, and you've got to give them time to speak and to listen sometimes, and that's what we have to do at this point in time. I would ask the chief, what time is this, it's at four o'clock, and where?
Correct, tomorrow at the high school.
At the high school.
It's Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday, I'm sorry, confused, it's Wednesday, four o'clock at the high school.
I'll forget that in a heartbeat, because I got the goldfish brain. So, all right, so Wednesday, four o'clock?
Yes.
Thank you, chief, I appreciate that. I'll let the chair, well, the chair can speak unless you want me to speak, it doesn't matter.
I'll let the other council speak first. Counsel Rivas, then Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, chief, and thank you to all of the speakers. It's not always easy to come up and, and talk about, you know, being afraid, and talking about things that you're concerned about, and I really commend our student, thank you so much, and parents. It's really important for us to hear from students. I, we rarely hear from students on the, in the school committee, on the advisory board for the receiver. We've asked for student voice to be included, and it is critical for us to understand what students feel and what students are going through. For the gentleman, Hector, I've heard similar concerns from other parents to what you were talking about, sort of a mismatch, right, in, in how discipline is delivered at the high school in particular, where something seemingly small, like a cellphone, or a hat, or some other minor transgression, students are berated. And yet, the seriousness of this incident, us as town counselors, I didn't hear about it till it came out in the paper. That's unacceptable for us to not know what is happening with our students and our staff, right? Our staff, they're frightened, and we, I, I shared some surveys that were done by the Education Association over the last two years. It isn't something new. The staff has been concerned, and I do not, I believe our police department has done everything that they needed to do when they became aware of the situation. But I also agree with Counselor Lazo, the administration is responsible, and it is our responsibility to find out what has been, what is happening in our system, in our school system. I know that teachers, I worked in those buildings, so I know firsthand, I know that teachers may not always feel safe to come forward and talk about what's happened. And we need a mechanism where teachers can come forward and talk about specific details, because I encourage our teachers to come and talk to Chief Woodson. I've known him for a long time, we worked together when I was in the district attorney's office, and I trust our police department. I trust them to be diligent and to do what they need to do to keep our community safe. But they can't do that, and if we don't know what is happening, our police department cannot keep our students and our staff safe. So we need people to come forward and talk about what they know, when something happened, how it happened, people that have firsthand knowledge. I will be also reaching out to the Board of Education, because I do feel that investigation is warranted to what happened before. And we're right, we can't change what happened in the past, but in every system, we need to know what actually happened, the details, before the police got involved, so that we can correct that from happening again. If we don't know, how can we better our system and create an environment that is safe for our students and our teachers if we don't know what happened before the police were called, given a tip? What would have happened if the police were not tipped off? We don't know, and that is extremely concerning to me.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the chief. First, I appreciate your forthrightness and your appreciation just for coming here and being present, you know, that matters, you know, being here and being present to answer to the public, that matters, and I appreciate that. It's not easy to be there answering people right now. Honestly, the communication doesn't fall on you. If it takes hours to get communicated with about an incident happening, that's not on you, you responded as fast as you could. The problem has been laid clear tonight that we need some sort of independent investigation into what were the decision-making process of the school district to get to where it got to, to not take hours to report this incident to the police department. This is something that's caused a lot of fear to a lot of people. I remember being in high school, going through the Sandy Hook shooting, and that was horrifying to me as a kid, where having to worry every day, is this going to happen to me, is this going to happen in my school, is this going to happen in the school next door, who knows? Like, the amount of mass shootings that are happening, and particularly in places like schools in this country the last 10 years, it has just gotten to the point where people are afraid. And I appreciate your honesty about not wanting to do any more vague statements, because when these type of incidents happen, we need detail. We need to know what's happening, what was the decision-making process, and we need to not let it get to this point again, because the public has a right to know. Every person who sent a kid to that school has a right to know. It's the least we can do. So thank you for the chief, to the chief for being here and being present, because that matters.
Mr. Counsel Matigan.
Thank you very much. Chief, I appreciate you being here with your candor and transparency, too. I appreciate all the speakers tonight, I can relate to almost all of them. The first speaker brought up a few different events. I was teaching in high school in 2015 when we had the lockdown for the stapler, and I was senior class advisor, I was with my seniors, you know, we all felt pretty comfortable, even though it was our first real experience together in a lockdown. But it, it went on where, you know, 45 minutes go by, you really don't even know what's going on, you know, we probably shouldn't be on our cell phones, everybody's trying to figure it out, and then all of a sudden, you know, they felt safe with me, but all of a sudden, you see at the doorway SWAT team with an automatic rifle of some kind, in the position of that anyway, just right in front of the door, everybody screams, no matter how long we've followed each other from when they were in eighth grade to 12th grade, it's a real thing, you know? I've also can relate to the other previous speaker, I've had a gun pointed at my face, too, it's not a pretty thing. I was also there for the 2019 lockdown, teaching in the middle school side, when the, the teacher planted the shotgun shells. I mean, I can relate to everybody, and it is not a good feeling, and I'm sorry that you all had to go through that, but the bigger picture here is the leadership. I mean, you can blame the principal, you could also blame the receiver who waited until the last day of summer to switch principals. I mean, the total mismanagement by the state, it comes from the top, the leadership comes from the top, and the problems are to be held accountable up there. We have to do everything we can from this point forward to feel safe, yes, but we need to get the state of Massachusetts to give the school system back, and I think everybody knows that, I think everybody's on the same page. But moving forward, that's the biggest picture. But there's nobody who can relate more than me, that telling us, when we, when I was 2005, a senior, going into 2006, they said, you'll never get into the colleges you want because we're going to be going to a Level Five district in 10 years. Well, that didn't happen either, everybody got the colleges they wanted to go to, and it's just a bunch of fear mongering and politics from the state. It's not about the education of the students in Southbridge when it comes to the state takeover. It was all about politics, and it's time for them to go. So if we want to channel your energy at the future meetings to helping that happen, I think together, we can all make enough noise to where this is going to have to get picked up on the news, the news channels. We're going to have to stand together and fight every way we can, because, like everybody has said, enough is enough. You cannot have our name, Southbridge High School, added to that long list of tragedies over the last 25 years. It is just not an option. So thank you all for coming out tonight, I really, really appreciate it.
And if I could, I wanted to wait until Citizens Forum was, I certainly didn't want to come up in front of anybody else that has to speak, but I'll say this, you know, I try to learn something new every day, I don't pretend to know everything, and a teacher said it, expressed it really well to me last week, when he said, listen, just because you feel safe, we were talking about the lockdown and not lockdown, he said, doesn't mean I feel safe. He's like, you're a police officer, you've been doing it for 27 years now, so my interpretation of when I'm looking at something, I might not be as concerned or in fear for my safety or my life as they are, because they're just not used to dealing with it, they're not accustomed, and they shouldn't be. So that was one thing that I took to heart, and that's why we're going to change a little bit of the way that we do things for lockdowns and for shelter in places. And I'll say this, too, with some of the people that had spoke tonight, you know, negative against the police or the schools, you know, it's not a bad thing, it's healthy, we can have disagreements, the loudest voice in the room isn't always right, I understand that, and I'm willing to sit here and I'll talk with anybody offline, online, publicly in my office or wherever, and I'll take criticism, I have no issue with that at all, especially if it's deserved. So it doesn't mean it's bad, just because we disagree on something, and I think that that's important to know, that you have a police department and the leader of the police department doesn't mind being criticized and having to speak to it publicly. And I'll say this, and I stole this quote from somebody, and I'll end, I promise on this note, you know, 20% of the population is children, I certainly did not come up with this quote, but they're 100% of our future. So please understand that I take it as my number one responsibility as a police chief in this community is to keep you safe. So if I do nothing else in my career for the next five years, you have my assurances, you will be kept safe at those schools. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Counsel.
Very good. Mr. Javon.
I want to, I want to take a moment to say thank you, Ms. Rivers, Hector, the young man who spoke from the student body. I was the vice principal for 13 and a half years before I retired. I get exactly what you're saying, I hear you, I guarantee you that I hear you and I hear what you're saying. I can certainly relate on a lot of different levels in terms of what may or did go on that evening, that day, I should say. As a result, Counselor Adams and I are putting together a council of the whole meeting for about two weeks from now, I'm not sure of the exact day yet, but there will be a council of the whole meeting. The agenda item will be a discussion around the Southbridge Public Schools. We will look into that issue as well as other issues. It will be a discussion, it will be civil, it will be reasonable, and people will get a chance to ask questions and find answers. We're putting the logistics of it together right now, I will notify the council as soon as possible regarding the specifics of the meeting. You can pencil in Tuesday, the 25th, I believe, as being the day of the meeting, but we hear you, the council as a whole hears you. I can guarantee you that. So thank you about that. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So just to answer Counsel Rivas, or not answer, just to piggyback off what Counsel Rivas has stated, I'll be reaching out to the commissioner and asking him to attend this event as well, from the school board, if you have an association, because I got to tell you, I do see social media with an association, but I don't know if that's going or not, so I would do that as well. Like the chair said, there'll be, there's some logistics that we have to work ourselves through, and how that process would be. I certainly don't want to sit here across from the state or Dr. Valar or other individuals sitting here at the dais, I'd rather be on the floor, speaking face to face at the evening level, and to have a serious conversation about where we're at, where we're moving to, a little bit of things here and there. You know, last year, the commissioner did come here and speak, and he spoke to only a few people, a select few, and I've been asking, and I know the chair's asked, I know a lot of councils are asking, when are we going to speak? And it was a possibility this past fall, well, we're now running into spring and summer, and it's, it's time that I think, you know, obviously, this incident is something, you know, that has to be discussed and looked at, but it has to be acted upon, not just talking about it. So I think this will be a good conversation to have as professionals, as parents, as sons and daughters that we sit up here. I'm going to also, last thing is, the chief brought up a good thing, or a good point. You know, his whole career is based, and I'm not trying to speak for the chief, but I can assume a little bit, his- I can assume a little bit, his whole career has been around, sometimes, you know, tragedies, hard decision-making, difficult, that we, a lot of us in here would never be able to make those decisions, and it's hard for somebody, not, I'm not speaking now for him, I'm speaking for me and my past career, to have a hard understanding that, like, I have to check myself, you know what I mean? Because there's things that I've seen in my lifetime that has made me numb, and, but I also have to make sure that I'm a counselor and a resident, a parent, a son, you know, all that kind of stuff, that not everybody acts, feels like me, you know, so when you sit there, and I, the chief and I had a great discussion, when a parent is scared or a child is scared, they're scared. Just because I went through something and go, nah, that, that individual's scared, they're worried about their livelihood, they're worried about their son, their nephew, daughter, niece, I'm just telling you, I, I think that's where we have to check ourselves and take a look at that, and it's a big issue. You know, this is something that can't be just said, ah, thank God it didn't happen. And I agree with Francine, training, training, knowing what your stuff is. I tell you, 26 years in the Marine Corps will teach you a lot about where your stuff is at, where's your gear at, what location is it at, what do you act like here and there, and how to make a decision on the spot. And I, so I can, I commend the fact that tactically and probably professionally, I, I truly believe the, the police department and their actions that day were warranted. But, we have to have communication, and I remember just talking to the chief the other day, and I used to tell my guys, feed the beast, communicate, communicate. You know, one thing we are always taught, shoot, move, and communicate, that, but in this portion, you gotta communicate, and I think that's one of those things where we have to do better job, and I love the fact, and I thank you all for coming out here, getting to the podium. This is what Citizens Forum is all about. We may not always agree on what is being said, the fact is, this is a democracy, and we do need to hear from the residents of this town, so we ask, and I pray that during the school board, or, or during here at the town council meeting, that you get up here and speak your piece, really, because sometimes we absolutely will learn from it. So I thank you for your time this evening, and I appreciate it, and we'll, we'll follow up with the council of the whole with everybody, okay?
Counselor Lozo.
Just a quick observation, I think it's, everybody's on the same page here in Southbridge, got a problem with Boston. I know that we keep saying invite the commissioner, the commissioner, I think what we need to do is invite each and every board of education, the ones that are on the board of education, the one that voted to take Southbridge over, these are the people that have to come to Southbridge and listen to our stories. The commissioner, with all due respect, I, I don't know, he, he comes, he goes, he speaks to certain people and doesn't speak to others. I think the board of education is the democracy of the Department of Ed, and I think maybe that's, needs to come here. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Does anyone else wish to approach the podium to speak on an issue?
In regards to the form of communication that I've had with the school in regards to any meeting, or anything that, events that were coming, happening at the school, it was just social media, and not all of us can be on social media.
Very true.
I mean, Facebook to me doesn't seem like the right medi- medium to let me know, hey, there's a parent-teacher meeting tonight, that's starting at 5 till 7 p.m. I was in Auburn Mall when I found out the first, and missed it, because it was like 7 p.m. when I found out that they were having the parent-teacher meeting. The second one, I found out through sheer luck, day, day prior. I don't think that, as far as communication goes, and I'm pretty sure my nephew would agree, that's not the way we should communicate, because they didn't even know, and they attend the school on a daily. My nephews, none of them know, and they attend the school on a daily, they did not know, they only knew that it was mentioned. And when we go on the Facebook page, my, my, my wife goes on the Facebook page, she's like, "Yeah, it's tonight, it's happening right now, ends in 30 minutes." That's too late. And I think that that's the beginning of the breakdown, communication has just not happened. I just wanted to talk on that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just one other comment on that.
Counselor Adams.
Real quick, just a comment to the gentleman who spoke, you know, when it comes to communication, yeah, it shouldn't be social media all the time, I understand that, but that's the way communication is happening these days, but nothing's wrong with a letter, nothing's wrong with an email that's sent off, from my understanding, there were emails, three emails that were sent off, the 13th, 16th, and 23rd, I believe it was, that were sent off. Another way is the website, the other way is, you know, the 911, or the reverse 911 call, stuff like that, you know, so it has to be also our responsibility as, as representatives of the town, that we get that information, and that we also get that information out as fast as possible, if we can do that, through our own personal pages, and, and I think that'll be key, but those are good questions, those are good, and, and, and being able to come up to a school board meeting and address those things, maybe they could also sit there and say, "Well, we are doing this, this, and that." So I mean, it's one of those things where not everybody's informed with all the communication software programs that you have through, through, I forgot, it's Aspen or something like that, a few other places, so I think that it's key to find that out, where, where we're lacking with the communication, absolutely. That's all I've got, Chair, thank you.
There being no further discussion, I'm calling a five-minute recess. Call this meeting back to order. We're moving on to agenda item number nine, vote to ratify the agreement with the Public Safety Consultants LLC in the amount of $6,200 to conduct an assessment center to fill the rank of two lieutenants and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Lozo, second by Counselor Ryan, Counselor Lozo.
At subcommittee meeting, 6 o'clock tonight, we voted unanimously to ratify the agreement.
Thank you. Chief, do you wish to address?
Yes, good evening again, just relatively quickly, and I apologize for the councils that already heard this a couple hours ago, but back in January, we put out a request for quotes to do an assessment center, we received them by the end of the, end of February, February 27th to be exact, we only had two quotes, two different companies put in, we used this particular company that I'm recommending tonight back in 2017 and back in 2022 to promote to sergeants, the fire department used it back in 2018 to promote to lieutenant, they also use in 2019 to make a deputy chief and a chief, this company's done Cheltenham, Sturbridge, Oxford, Auburn, police and fire promotions, very reputable company, and I just, I recommend that we go with Public Safety Consultants for the next assessment center for the rank of lieutenant. It's budgeted, existing, the council's already heard me talk at nauseam about these positions, it's been approved, so I, I won't belabor the issue anymore.
Counsel, any concerns? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Have a good evening. Item number 10, vote to approve a change order with ENE Systems for $2,574 to run and string CAT 5 cable where JAM installed conduit to go forward with the security camera install using, using CDBG fiscal year 21 funds and authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Steves, second by Counselor Ryan, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, unanimous of all present at the PND meeting we had the other week, and it, it is basically self-explanatory, and the memo is to string up the CAT 5 cables for the, for running the cameras over at those fields.
Counsel, any concerns? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 11, vote to approve entering into an agreement with CP House LLC for $115,267 to provide a 0% commercial improvement loan to install sprinklers at 205 Main Street, helping trigger the occupancy of its restaurant using ARPA funds appropriated June 27, 2022, agenda item number 46, and authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
Two move. Second.
Motion by Counselor Lozo, second by Counselor Ryan, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, unanimous of all present at the PND meeting, obviously this is part of the ARPA funds, as far as, that we given the economic and planning team of $250,000, first one was $85,000 for 1 through 11 Central Street, and this now is another one for 205 Main Street. Again, in the memo, it states repayments start eight years, the first years, no, no payments, but the next seven years will be payments to pay that money back as a 0% loan.
Very good. Counselor McHedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just reading over the, the memo here that was put forward, there's just a couple questions. It says that it's for a, for their restaurant, so what restaurant is going into this building? That would be my first question. Second question is, it says, "Starting eight years from the release of funds," does that mean, to me, that's confusing, that's starting eight years from the commenced release of the funds, or does it start immediately?
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just, I can only answer to the second question that you have, eight years, okay, so the, it'll start, that question was actually brought up, first year of that loan, no payments, but then it's gotta be paid back by the eighth year of that loan, so it's seven, they have seven years to pay those funds back.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just pointing out that it says, "Starting eight years from the release of the funds," so that's a little confusing.
Correct.
And what about this, the restaurant, it says their restaurant, so I'm wondering what kind of restaurant is going in there?
Ms. Dean.
Greg Cummings is the new owner, he purchased it from Greg Cormier, he's from the eastern part of the state, he says he has a few things he's keeping under wraps, and so we're trusting that the restaurant will come to fruition. Part of the agreement is that in one year, we will inspect the work that is done, and that he will be in operation with a restaurant.
So you don't know what kind of restaurant is going in?
No.
Well, what happens if he sells the building?
We will lean the property upon releasing the funds, so that should it be sold, at that time, it would trigger us being paid back in full.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Counselor Dow.
Thank you, through you. So if we release the money and there's no restaurant there, what's the penalty?
We can exercise our right to ask for all the money to be paid upfront, we could pay through legal fees for that.
So is anything that's gonna be endowed in the contract, if you don't commit to the agreement, where you will?
We have the right to.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 12, vote to approve purchasing up to $10,000 using the CDBG fiscal year 20 funds and CDBG miscellaneous income account number 214000-4825000-80230 to purchase a welcome sign, a xylophone, and an ADA swing for Capello Park McCannfield upgrades.
Two move.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Dow, second by Counselor Lozo, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, unanimous of all present at the PND, if there's any questions, I'd refer them to Ms. Dean.
Counselor McHedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I never received any backup material for this item in the packet, and I did inquire, and there was no backup material. So...
No, there wasn't.
We're not gonna receive backup material for this one?
Ms. Dean.
Yes, I apologize to Counselor Adams, I did say that I was gonna get you something, if you could forgive me for not getting you something, and just think back to the memos that we have provided in the past, almost at nauseam related to these items, we're in the last stages of trying to figure out our funds for the playground and the, the items that are required for the park grant, we were looking at the procurement documents with my quotes from the three different playgrounds, the final quote for $114,000 that was just approved at a recent town council meeting, so you approved $114,000, it only includes the large play structure and the, this large, what's called an oodle swing, and that quote, oh, and with a welcome sign, so that quote up against the two other playgrounds puts that vendor $1,000 less than the other vendors. Then, they provided us a quote for these other items, the xylophone and the, the panel board, you know, after we were in conversation with our citizens about some other things they would like to see us spend our funds on, which we have, but in order to ensure we have proper procurement, I needed to kind of back up and say, uh-oh, timeout, we need to make sure that everything's clean and clearly shown that we did proper quoting for the, for the playgrounds using the OST contract, FAC 104, et cetera, et cetera, you can, you know, pick from these bids, go out for quotes, as long as the construction's under $50,000. So, now, we're at this point where we have to have an ADA swing included in the park grant that closes in June, and so I had to separate that out and make sure that happens now. The playground is now happening with CDBG after June, if you'll remember, so just bear with me, I thank you for your flexibility, and if you'll allow me to, to go forward with these items, we'll have met the park grant requirements with the small ADA swing, and we'll be able to go ahead and purchase these other add-on items.
So, why would you need a welcome sign? We don't, we have a sign there at Capello Park already? Welcome to Capello Park, I believe we do.
That was, if I may through you, Chair, that was something suggested by the designers, I think you've seen that all along now, for months now, it seems like a very small detail.
And a xylophone, what is that about?
If I may through you, Chair, if I, if I, if I again could remind you, it was discussed, Counselor Reeves asked, were you able to meet that constituents' interests in other items at the park that would somehow promote sensory and accessibility and diversity and all the things that we're trying to do, and so it was established that we were gonna get a xylophone that was gonna have custom rainbow colors, and we were going to get a sensory panel.
So I don't understand, it's a big xylophone, or, I just don't understand what is, what is it?
Yes, yes, and so if you could just Google, or I could, I could send you back to all of the supporting documentation, oh, or better yet, I'm sorry, all of this stuff is online, Southbridge Civil Space, if you could just Google Southbridge Civil Space, and under the McCannfields, Capello Park McCannfields upgrades, you'll see a picture of the items, and you can click in for the update on the playground equipment, I'll make sure to add the xylophone there.
Okay, I will say this, Morris Street doesn't have an ADA swing or a xylophone, has a lot of graffiti over there, so I'd like someone to take care of that, please. I don't have a problem with McCannfield, but it's not the only field in town, thank you.
Counselor Reeves.
Um, yes, I do, through you, Chair, I do remember from our resident who talked about bringing her son to McCannfield, Henry Street Park, for those of us who have lived here a long time, and the equipment is for children who are neurodiverse and who have disabilities and would need that, those, that equipment to communicate with other kids in the playground.
Counselor Mettigny.
Thank you. I just had a quick question, I support this, I, I will vote for it, but I was waiting in the PND packet too for the information, I thought it would be here, so just approximately, how much is the xylophone? How much money does it cost?
Uh, like a between $4,000 and $6,000 item, but a lot of the, the playground equipment, standalone playground equipment, that is actually, it's a larger one, it will, it's, I think we've heard comments again and again, playground equipment is very expensive, and it truly is, if you get online and you pay for what you get, you can go through, what I considered some of the, the less quality brands, I think that the town will be happy with its product, and, and if we learn from experience, we, having done the basketball fence on the cheap, I think we should take pride in the equipment we purchase and hope that it will last a long time.
Oh, totally, I'm, I'm a musician myself, so I just want to be able to say, hey, guys, this week at town council, we bought a $5,000 xylophone. But, thank you, I appreciate it.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I just wanna say thank you, you're doing a great job on these parts, the kids are gonna be so happy and enjoying after we finish, everything's gonna look good, thank you very much.
Hope we're not creating too many expectations.
Counselor Lozo.
Just a quick footnote, Henry Street, I call it Henry Street when I go out.
Just a quick footnote, Henry Street, I call it Henry Street when I go up, the Little League Field, the softball fields, Capello Park. I do agree with Counsel Mark Hattie that are out of the fields in town, but we need to make this right one time. And that's why all the money that's being poured into the Henry Street area is going to make that a real showcase of a recreation area with ball fields and, and all types of things. And that's why, for me, the Capello Park and the McMahon Field, or McAnfield, let's do it right one time, put it all in, and then after we can move on to another field, after we complete this one. Thank you.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody, I know Counsel Mark Hattie always brings it up, but just a reminder, there is a master plan for that part, those parks, and that she's following exactly what those master plans detail. We also have and works for Morris Street, that area, to get a master plan scheduled and ready to go, so we can, too, provide funds for that Morris Street. So I do appreciate it, and I do respect what Counsel Mark Hattie is saying. I got it.
Ms. Dean.
If I could just share anecdotally, when I was up there last week with Katie Yoder, my new CDBG coordinator, I spoke with three adult skateboarders that were having a grand old time on the skate park, which is part of the park grant funding. It made me so proud to see them enjoying it. And at the same time, there were plenty of people playing basketball up on Capello Park. So we're seeing it in use on the upper part, and then as the bottom part gets finished, we'll start to see it all come to life again.
Counsel Adal.
Thank you. No volleyball. Let's make it right. No volleyball.
Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 13, vote to approve change order number five with JAM for up to $10,000 to install up to 18 trees at Capello Park and McAnfields furnished by Opakum Land Trust using CDBG fiscal year 20 funds and authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Adal, second by Counsel Ryan. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unanimous of all present at the PND meeting. This obviously has a lot to do with Opakum, who has provided the trees through the grant that we received up, I believe it's 1,000 trees. So Opakum has given another 18 trees to the community. Obviously, somebody has to plant them. So at this point in time, this is what we're utilizing for.
I'd like to thank Opakum for their continued good work regarding the trees in town and finding all kinds of uses for the trees, various locations, and really helping to beautify the town. Very definitely good work on their part. So Opakum, thank you very much. Ms. Dean.
So since providing you this subcommittee agenda item, we've actually come to more detail. In the end, there are 16 trees that were already included in the original plan that will be delivered tomorrow morning. There's an additional eight trees that was pending your approval tonight that are going to be included in JAM's contract, and it will be for an additional $6,000 and change for them to install. The last 10 are actually being donated by Opakum Land Trust with installation included in June, because we decide, we could not afford all 18 to, with the last of our funds. So it even further begs for us to thank Opakum Land Trust for their donations and their willingness to put those last 10 trees in at their cost.
Well said. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 14, vote to approve entering into the following agreements or requisitions to be funded by the Urban Agenda Grant fiscal year '23 and spent by June 30, 2023, voted unanimously by the Redevelopment Authority members present on March 23, 2023, and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. These are the following agreements or requisitions: A, $17,000 for performers at the Central Street parking lot from May and June 2023; B, up to $20,000 to prep the wall at 111 Central Street in advance of painting the mural; C, up to $23,000 to pay a muralist to paint a mural at 111 Central Street. The muralist, the muralist is to carry their own insurance, provide own materials and lift unless otherwise negotiated; D, $1,000 to hire a consultant to assist with securing performers and promoting events; E, $4,000 in community programming to complement the mural and concerts; and F, $3,250 in supplies.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, second by Counselor Steves. There we go. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unanimous of all present at the PND, obviously Urban Agenda Grant, which was some that we used a couple of years ago for the performances over Central Street Plaza and a few other things. And this is just the spend down plan for those funds as well. Again, unanimous of all present.
Counsel Mark Hattie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I remember when this came before us last year, and I spoke against it, actually, but when I look at it this year, it's the same concerns I have. I'm not sure that this is promoting economic development. I think that it's kind of backwards. When I look at that area over there, and I see the empty lot there that's starting to look like a mini landfill, I think the money should be spent to fix that up. You're having performers there. I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea to have performers, but you want to have a nice area where these performers set up. I mean, I've been to Providence, I've been to Federal Hill. They have the same kind of area with a water fountain. They have bands. People set up booths there. They can sit outside and have food. So to me, it's a little backwards here. And rather than spending it on performers, I'd like to see that area cleaned up a little bit. But I mean, I give you an A-plus for, for the work that you're doing here. I just think that I would like to see some of the funds used for that. The other thing is, I love that wall there, and I don't want to see it whitewashed. I know that some people say it hasn't been around that long, but it's a very beautiful mural, and I'd hate to see it covered over. It, to me, it gives it an old-town feel with that up there, and it's just something that I don't want to see covered up. And to make matters worse, when I see the, some of the bands that come there, they're not even from Southbridge. Some of them are from Boston, Worcester. I'd like to see some local talent anyways. There's plenty of people around here, local talent, that could use the funds. Even the person hiring the local funds, I know plenty of people around here that know a lot of bands. Even Counsel Muntigney knows a lot of bands and singers, and so I would like to see local talent at least over there. But I do give you an A-plus for the effort. Thank you.
Anyone else?
If I may through you, Chair?
Certainly.
I take the A-plus, thank you. I assume that he's referencing, if he's referencing 210 Main Street, that's private investment, that's private development, that's out of our hands. We can only spend our funds within the public means and public agendas that we can establish to try to encourage investors and people to move to this town, find an interest in this town, draw tourists into this town, et cetera. With regards to the mural and the musicians, I ask anyone who has input or suggestions for musicians or comments on the mural, et cetera, please by all means email the intern, edpintern@southbridgemass.org. That's edpintern@southbridgemass.org. He's still putting together the suggested list of performers.
Very good. Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one, Counsel Mark Hattie opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Drive safe. Item number 15, vote to approve the Department of Public Works request to declare a surplus at 2002 Ford F-350.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, second by Counsel Steves. Counsel Mark Hattie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was voted unanimously at the DPW Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? I believe one opposed?
No.
One? No? You're again, you're four?
I'm in favor.
Oh, very good. Nine oh, motion passes unanimously. Just checking. Item number 16, vote to approve a transfer request for $6,558.08 from account number 600-440-583-000-89500, Sewer Capital Reserve, to account number 600-440-583-000-23581, Sewer Capital Equipment, to provide additional funding for a new fleet truck.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Ryan, second by Counselor Steves. Counsel Mark Hattie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was voted unanimously at the DPW Subcommittee meeting. There were some questions about where the new fleet truck came from. I don't remember us ever voting on it. I think it was probably voted on a year or two before we, before we even met. So it wasn't really in our budget at the time, and, or it wasn't in the capital planning that we voted on, I believe. So they didn't purchase it on time or something, and the cost went up. So that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel? Counsel Adams.
I think it was a good explanation the gentleman gave. I mean, it was one of those things where you come up and, you know, he just arrived, and that's where, where it was, he just took control, and now he's trying to undo some things that maybe were missed through the year. So it was a good explanation from that gentleman.
He made some pretty good comments, too, about how he's, he's over budgeted. So I thought it was quite an honest thing to say.
You may regret that later.
I think so.
Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one, Counsel Adal against. Motion passes. Item number 17, vote to approve a transfer request for $1,000 from account number 610-450-576-1000, Water Legal, to account number 610-450-524-2000, Water Data Processing, to cover increased costs for Global Data Systems.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, second by Counselor Steves. Counsel Mark, sorry, Counsel Adal. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was voted unanimous at the Subcommittee.
Very good. Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 18, vote to approve the contract between Gru White Consulting LLC in the amount of $11,450 and authorize the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, second by Counsel Adams. Counsel Adams, is the choice?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Counselors, for getting this seconded. Anyways, this is part of the RFP that we requested for the Town Manager's Search Committee. We had originally three RFPs. One bowed out for other reasons, and we had two left. We had a great conversation, a lot of guidance from the HR department and our town manager, as far as, we reviewed the packets. And then we also requested that those firms attend a meeting. One was virtual and one wasn't in person. We had some little bit of discussion here and there. We chose, it was a, I believe it was a four to one vote in there for Gru White. When we opened up the packet, for the financial packet, their request was $11,500. We decided to open up the second one, financial, and it was $24,500. So obviously, I, we, I, as a member over there, thought we picked the right group. The gentleman, Rick, was, I believe, spot on, had a lot of good questions for him, and he answered them quickly and, I think, responsibly, and moved on from there. Requesting the town council to support this, this evening, so we can start moving on with our Town Manager's Search.
Counsel Mark Hattie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Reading over this, the paperwork that you provided, it looks to me like you're not going to be hiring a town manager till sometime in August. Did I read that right?
Well, that's something that when we did the RFP, this is for the period of time. So if we're able to do it in June, that's our goal. You know, once they find, he's already working, but that, this, this group is already working with us in a sense of getting some information from us and reaching out to the town counselors and a few others and leaders of the community. So we hope to have it before that, but we gave that contract pretty much to that period of time.
All right.
Just in case.
Counsel Lozso.
Mr. Chairman, through the chair, the council never set forth how many candidates it wanted to have presented to, you know, whether it's five, four, three, two. The council at some point has to direct the search committee on how many candidates to push up to the council for a future meeting.
I would welcome that. If, I know, I don't believe we did that last time, a couple of years ago, but I'd welcome any, any, any suggestions to us. And what we'll do is, we, we have been looking at three individuals, at least three individuals to come in front of the town council itself, like kind we had last time. But, you know, if it's more, obviously, we'll be doing some interviews behind closed doors in executive session once they get some of the resumes in and candidates in as well. But if the council would like to do the recommendation on some things, we can try to work that out. Absolutely.
I'm willing to take responses from counselors. Counselor Steves?
I had a quick question first off. I have no problem with, you mean, responses as far as the number of candidates?
Can I hear you?
Well, on the side, yeah, but, but for tonight.
Okay, my question actually was...
Please approach the microphone.
Oh, sorry. My question was specifically regarding the contract itself, section number four. It refers to a proposal dated April 12, 2017. What is that?
Boy, that's an oversight.
I mean, were they, were they our contractor back then?
Yeah, they, they, they worked here before, but some, boilerplate contract, and I'll have it fixed.
Okay.
Immediately.
Anyone else? Counsel Ryan.
I would be fine with three, just like last time. I felt that was the appropriate amount, to have three candidates come up as a finalist.
And if there's any recommendations you have, please forward them to myself, and I'll forward them to the committee. And I do know that he will be reaching out to the town council, some staff members here in town, and leaders, business owners and organization leaders of the community as well.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Very good. Okay, we have three amendments to zoning bylaws that we need to read tonight. One is on section five, one is on section nine dash one, and one is on section 10. I'll read the first one on section five. What, what I'm hoping to do tonight is to read those sections that are being amended and not the zoning, the bylaw in its entirety. We'll read what the amendments are. These are available online. I believe they were put on today. And we'll go forward from there. So the first one is...
Mr. Chairman, before, just clarification here.
Sure.
The version that I have sent electronically is the original version. I don't have any of the changes.
Yeah.
You don't have any change, there were no changes in the?
Not my, not my electronic version.
I can concur. I had no amended version. It's just the original version.
Yeah, so if you have the original version, oh, well.
Amended sections after the public hearing would have been sent to you all after the PND Subcommittee meeting, or just before it, one or the other. They were sent to the town manager's office, so they should have been, I'm sorry for not double-checking that those were sent out to you, whether that's an oversight or not.
I mean, should they still be in red? Because the ones I, the ones I have are all in black, so.
If they're all in black, then that's probably the final version, depending on when you receive them. The final versions are all in black. They are not in red.
Oh, I was expecting.
Every other term that we've done, bylaw updates, they've been the final version that's come to you for reading.
A motion, Mr. Chair, to postpone?
Counsel Muntigney.
The next three, would you mind? If we made a motion to postpone until we have the proper document you're looking for?
Yeah, we can work up. Yeah, we can work it.
Put to the next meeting.
Yep.
I'll second that.
I second that motion for nineteen.
We have a motion from Council Muntigney to postpone for one meeting date, which would be the, uh, August, April twenty-fourth. And we have a second by Council Lozo. Any discussion on the postponement? Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can we read it this, do you have the update? I believe Eric did send it off to us.
You've got red text in front of you. I don't have any red text in front of me.
All we're doing is reading it off.
But the point is, we can't, we can't read the changes because we can't tell what the changes are. I can see he's got red text in front of him, but I don't have any red text in my, in my version. I have no idea what the changes actually are. I mean, I was at the meeting, obviously, we were all part of the-
Yeah, no, no, I, okay, I'm just trying to move along. The gentleman's been sitting here for a while, so.
Well, I can read, I can read, I spoke-
I don't know what reading my share, but I can't tell what the changes are.
Councilors, I spoke with, um, Eric this morning and I, I asked him specifically for copies that I could read this evening regarding the three bylaws. I have the changes here. I was going to read just the changes only. Uh, he went so far as to highlight the specific changes for me, um, and I can read those this evening.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to postpone and a second unless we withdraw or vote on that.
I, um, I appreciate your, your point of order. Um, I'm just explaining why, um, I'm, I'm explaining why it may not be necessary to postpone this evening. So then we can vote on it. Um, and we will vote on it. So it's possible for me to read it. I can read the whole thing tonight and we can move on from there. Or if you wish to postpone and get copies like I have, then that's, if that's the wish of the council, we can go that way, too. So if there's any further discussion, Council Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you.
Is that going to affect anything, any, any future, uh, or we have time?
We do have time. The, um, section nine and the definitions for flood have to be passed prior to June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, uh, when the new FEMA regulations and, and the flood maps go into effect.
All right. Section nine is, is, uh, June?
Yeah, section nine point one, as well as there's definitions in section ten.
Yeah.
So that, that's the only time sensitive, um, yeah, that's the only real time sensitive thing. However, I, if I may, um, every other time that we have done zoning bylaw updates after the public hearing, you have present, you've been presented with a final document, not a red line document. And so if, uh, something had changed, um, I would have loved to have been notified. I would have gladly sent you all the final red line document.
Thank you.
Whichever the vote may be this evening is what it is, so.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to postpone until the twenty-fourth of April. All those in favor? Two, three, four, five. I see seven. Those against? Seven for the postponement, two against, the motion passes to postpone. So all three agenda items are postponed until the twenty-fourth. Eric, if you can wait a minute, Alex, so I can, I can speak with you and then we'll be okay. Please, please hang on. Thank you. Okay, very good. Uh, moving on, council's forum, item number twenty-two. Uh, Council Dow.
Nothing at that time. Thank you.
All set? Very good. Council Steves?
I'm saving it for the future. Remind me not to be here.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention a couple of quick things. Um, one is that the, for those of you who are interested, um, as I mentioned earlier, just to repeat the fact that we're doing our first budget meeting for general government on Thursday at six thirty, uh, which covers a whole very long list of the budget. Um, and I don't, I don't necessarily think we'll get through all of it. I may decide to break it up because for, depend, kind of depends on how long, but we already have the other dates scheduled, so it's kind of, we'll kind of play it by ear. Um, and I just wanted to point out, since you kind of brought up Opaca earlier, um, the Opaca breakfast at Norcross is this Saturday. Sorry, that's all I have.
That's all you have. Very good. Council Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to, again, thank all the parents who came out tonight to come have their voices heard. Um, this is a very tumultuous time. There's a lot of stuff going on and it's really important that you be engaged and know that your community's representatives are listening to you and hearing you. Um, this is, I've gotten more phone calls and more emails about what's been happening than I have in my entire time of public service. People are taking this very seriously. So, thank you for coming here, being heard and being present and fighting for the changes that need to happen. And that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Rivas.
So I have a couple of things. Um, I also want to thank everyone that came here tonight, um, to talk about this very important issue. Um, please keep reaching out to us. Uh, it is important for us to hear from our community, students, families. Uh, please try to make every effort, um, to attend, um, the meeting on Wednesday at four o'clock at the high school. Um, but if you can't, please reach, reach out to us. We are all available, um, you know, on, on social media, our emails, um, you know, our phone numbers are published, uh, so please reach out to us. Any one of us, um, really want to hear, we do want to hear from our residents about these very important matters. Um, I also want to, um, remind our community that, um, uh, voter registration is going on right now. Um, we have been out in the community. I've been at a couple of locations with, um, some, one of my students from the youth , um, voices group, and we've been out to the Spanish market, Jacob Edwards Library. We'll be out and about at different spots, um, registering, uh, people to vote for our local election on June thirteenth. Really important, um, all of these issues, whether there is a non-binding question on the ballot, um, lots of candidates running for town council, school committee, redevelopment authority, all these other very important positions in our town. Um, so please, if you're not registered, you can reach out to me, um, and I will bring you the forms, um, and we'll get them in. And just another couple of pieces of information. Catholic Charities, um, has two different programs going on right now. Um, weekly on Wednesdays, they are doing a program, um, for after-school, um, for students ages ten to seventeen, for students to learn about growing food and hydroponics, really exciting, um, program that they're doing. Um, for more information, you can reach out to Catholic Charities at www.ccworc.org. Um, and their number is five oh eight seven six five five nine three six. They will also have a financial literacy workshops for, I believe these are for adults, um, May fourth, eighteenth, June first, and twenty-ninth, on Thursdays from three to four. Um, they will be going over banking needs, budgeting, saving goals, and credit health. So, really important programs, um, for our community, for students, um, for adults who need help, and that's at Catholic Charities. Thank you.
Very good. Council Lozo.
I would like to thank all the citizens tonight that came forward. Um, they basically stated the obvious. We know this has been going on for quite a few years up at the school district. Um, efforts have been made by council, by the funding, which we control and, uh, we've always run over minimum school expenditure. We've always funded improperly. Um, we're going to constantly have, I'm going to bump heads with management. It's just what the problem is. And when I identify the problem, they say you're picking on them. Well, the proof is in the pudding. We're second from the bottom on MCAS. Various statistics are telling, telling the tale. So I give the school committee a lot of credit. Uh, I went to the last school committee meeting and they were very civil. They tried to show, um, allow that they can work together, which plays well with the state. But the thing is, that doesn't fix the problem. The problem is receivership and we need to continuously work on it. We've got a petition circulating, circulating, and, uh, we'd like to just have a vote of the people to actually say what's on their mind. Um, we were taken over in improper manner. We had a level one high school, level three middle school, and our elementary's, uh, level two. And we did not have any level five. It was a political motivated takeover. You, they did it. They've been here for eight years. It's been a disaster. So, moving forward, what do we do? First of all, the safety of the building has, is paramount. I think tonight was, we had some young fellows coming up and that kid with the ass on his, uh, jacket, uh, really stole my heart, uh, showing the spirit of his school, the pride of his school, and then he has to come to the town council and tell us about the problem of the school. So moving forward, we'll try and, you know, work our way through this. The chief has been outstanding as far as his presence at the school, with the administration. He has communicated better with the teachers and staff than the principal at the high school. So going forward, I, I hope he keeps his, uh, his presence at the high school. He needs it. Uh, we've had the revolving door on administration up there on the high school side, not on the middle school side. Uh, the administrator of their house has been spectacular. Uh, his turnover has been low. His students leaving have been low. He's been really, really turning his, his side of the building around. I'd just like to take one minute to thank Charlie Blanchard. Um, I don't know of any other councilors that, that have seen a town manager actually do a budget. When we had a couple of town managers left, too, uh, they didn't do the budget. Um, it came from the finance director and, uh, it was worked on by the council and it moved forward through the process. Charlie Blanchard, in his experience that he brings to the table, he basically works on a lot of the internal issues that I'm very impressed with. And I'd just like to thank Charlie for, for coming to Southbridge and knowing your experience and stuff, doing a fine job with the budget. There's going to be some bad news during the budget. We've done a lot of wonderful things in the town of Southbridge. Now we have to pay for them. And I think we have to surgically work through, uh, some of the moves that we have to make or cuts. But I just want to thank you very much, Charlie. That's it.
Very good. Council Muntigney.
Thank you. Just basically echoing everybody saying how appreciative I am that the community came out. I pretty much already gave my comments on that earlier, but we need to try to take something positive, um, the energy that, like I told somebody during the recess, uh, the tornado back in about ten years ago brought this community together and it always seems like, um, tragedy or troubled times is what brings everybody really out of, you know, there are some people that'll come here all the time and talk, but when you get the amount of people tonight that are here to show support, we need to now take this opportunity to harness this energy and get the job done and bring the schools back home. Thank you.
Very good. Council Mike Eddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing, I've got a couple of things here. Um, the, the first thing I wanted to talk about, excuse me, is the Main Street project. Uh, back in September twenty twenty-two, Town Manager McCall said at a meeting that with Mr. Desjardins from D, DPW representative from DEP and Lynch Construction, Lynch Construction has agreed to mill the downtown area and add an overlay down to Everett Street. Mr. McCall said he raises this issue tonight because Lynch wants direction from the council on what to do and that it takes too long to get started. Lynch is going to recommend waiting until the springtime and warmer weather for paving. So I just want to point out that according to the Town Manager McCall, there was an agreement for them to come back and do Main Street. So I have brought this up at a deep, recent DPW Subcommittee meeting and it doesn't seem to be, the new director, uh, indicated that he didn't really know much about it. So I would like the town manager to look into this and make sure that if there is an agreement, I'm, I'm going to presume it's in writing and I would like it, the work to begin on Main Street as they promised. Uh, second of all, I did, I have started looking at the budget book and I appreciate the hard work you've done, Charlie, but I have to say, some of these increases in the, by these department heads, I have never seen them this high since the four years that I've been on this council. I've seen some that I've, I've seen some in the nine percent range, which I thought was kind of high, but when I started seeing them in the thirty-five percent and the twenty-six percent range, then I had to question exactly what is going on with the budget this year. I think there is going to have to, we're going to have to really take a good look at it because, uh, some of this is just, it's beyond what residents can afford, uh, going forward. I did have an issue with the school. I didn't really want to talk about it tonight a lot at the Citizens Forum. The only thing that I was concerned about with the school is that I agree with Council Rivas. The only, the only time I heard about it was when it was in the newspaper. Up until that point, I heard some rumors going around, but that was it. So that's one of the complaints that I really have on it. I know it's not, it's not the receiver's fault what happened up there, but he could have done a better job communicating what was going on at the time. And finally, we did have a recommendation tonight from the curbside committee, and so at some point I would like the council to at least vote on a recommendation. Uh, if you want to put it on the ballot between the bags and the flat fee, that's one thing, but, uh, I think the council should vote whether you want a recommendation or not. I wasn't exactly in favor of the recommendation, but I promised them that I would present it as they wanted, and so I did. But I do think we should discuss it and vote on it, uh, soon because we do have a deadline coming up. Thank you. That's all I have.
Very good. Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Council Mike Eddy on the, uh, the voting. Got to figure that out really quick or the time's going to go right by and we won't have an option at that point. Um, so, uh, a couple of things, uh, real quick. Town Manager Search Committee, I thank the council for approving that this evening and of, obviously the Town Manager Search Committee itself for all the hard work they're doing and, and continue to do. So that, that will actually start, I'll, I'll email Rick tomorrow and congratulate him and we'll start moving along. Now, as far as the ARPA update, we did have an ARPA meeting. There's quite a few agenda items that are coming up on the next meeting and, uh, the reason why I'm bringing it up on those next meetings is because I will be here the first week in, in May. Um, but that brought down quite a bit of the funds and, uh, we decided that we're going to put an operational pause on about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to, to take a look at if there's an issue here with the curbside that can offset some of the costs that may go there. So we're going to take a look at that as well. Uh, so let's move it along and, uh, just wanted to let everybody know, the Memorial Day Parade will be May twenty-ninth and I believe will start around ten o'clock. Uh, we are, the, the Veterans Council of Southbridge is attempting to get a couple tactical vehicles down our Main Street, hopefully before the, uh, new, new, uh, asphalt gets laid back down, but we'll take a look at that. And, uh, so you'll start seeing a flyer and, and a few things here very soon. But, and also the last thing is the initiative that the Veterans Council's been doing, you'll start seeing, uh, work next week, uh, over here at the World War Memorial Park. So, just want to let those, that know, that, uh, everybody know that those donors and everybody else that's been involved in this thing, it, it's finally come to fruition